Good evening, everyone.
Is he come?
This is the Monroe Township Board of Education Monthly Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Here.
Ms. Bora?
Here.
Ms. DePain?
Here.
Ms. Fabiano?
Here.
Dr. Peck? Mr. Pirro?
Here.
Ms. Ratner?
Here.
Ms. Sharma?
Here.
Mr. Tufano? Mr. Zeichner?
Here.
We have a quorum. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published and electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted May 10, 2024, and June 7, 2024, at all schools on district website, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of municipality.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is our closed session resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4 through 6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects: harassment, intimidation, or bullying, matters protected by attorney-client privilege, including proposed confidential settlement agreement involving student #87512, confidential personnel matter. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have a motion?
Motion?
Second.
We'll be back at 7:15. Good evening, everyone. We do have a resolution coming out of closed session, whereas a dispute has arisen regarding the special education program for student #87512, and whereas the student, the attorney representing the board in this matter and the superintendent have recommended resolution of this matter pursuant to the terms set forth in a settlement agreement, and whereas the settlement agreement calls for the expenditure of board funds for the 2023, 24, and 2024, 25 school years towards the cost of tuition and related services for an out-of-district program, and whereas the board finds that resolving this matter pursuant to the terms set forth in the settlement agreement is in the best interest of the district, now therefore be it resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education that it hereby approves settlement agreement in this matter. Is there a motion?
Motion?
Second.
A motion by Ms. Alvarez, second by Ms. Bora? Okay, the next item on our agenda... Oh, roll call, sorry. So excited to see all the people here.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Pirro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tuf... Oh, sorry. Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay.
The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes, the supplement to the closed session meeting on October 18, 2023. Can I have a motion?
Motion?
Second.
A motion by Mr. DePain, second by Ms. Ratner. Any questions, abstentions, recusals?
I abstain. I abstain. Oh, yeah.
Dr. Peck abstains. Any other abstentions or recusals?
I abstain.
I abstain.
I abstain.
Mr. Pirro, Mr. Zeichner, and Ms. Sharma also abstained.
Really, do I need to abstain on the portion, or specific to, there was a confidential matter? So just on that one portion?
I... It's my understanding that we're just approving the...
Or just the correction?
Yep. Okay. Okay, the next one is the Public Board of Education Organization Meeting on May 1st. Is there a motion?
Motion?
Oh, we have... No.
Oh, we don't vote.
Second?
Second.
So that was motion by Ms. Bora, second by Mr. Pirro. Any abstentions, recusals? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is the Public Board of Education Meeting, May 13, 2024. Can I have a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bora, second by Mr. DePain. Any abstentions or recusals? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the closed session meeting minutes from May 13, 2024. Is there a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Motion from Ms. Bora, second by Ms. DePain. Any abstentions or recusals? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, we did not take a roll... We didn't... I didn't ask if there was anybody opposed. I just asked if there was abstentions for the supplement. Do we need to go back? I just got a list of abstentions, not approvals. Is there... Is there anybody that... So, going back to the supplement minutes from October 18, were there... I know that there were four abstentions, correct? Mr. Pirro, Dr. Peck, Mr. Zeichner, and Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Are there... Is any abstentions or recusals in addition to that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on our agenda is our Student Board Members Report.
All right, good evening, everyone. We're so happy to be here and sharing our student report with you. Okay, so we'll get started with Mill Lake. Mill Lakers have been energetically sprinting towards the finish line with a flurry of activities. The days and nights have been filled with field days, class trips, shows, and various end-of-the-year events. Last week, the third grade students visited Woodland School, where the staff and students welcomed them with open arms. Thank you to the parents and staff for supporting Mill Lake Field Days, where students competed with enthusiasm for the day's honor. On Thursday, June 7th, I mean, June 6th, their kindergarten show set a high standard for all future events. This week, their preschool classes will showcase their achievements in the Preschool Extravaganza Moving Up Show. A big shout-out to the Mill Lake staff, parents, and students for their exceptional efforts. Mr. Snyder and the band staff visited Mill Lake this week for instrument testing. Talented Mill Lakers demonstrated their future... Their skills as future drummers, trumpeters, and percussionists. The generous PTO arranged for the Kona Ice Truck to visit the school for all the students and staff on Monday, June 17. The third grade kicking-off-to-woodland kickball tournament also kicked off this week, providing thrilling opportunities for all. On June 20, all students will cheer on the third graders as they face off against the Mill Lake staff. The school wishes everyone a happy and productive summer, and thanks everyone for supporting the Mill Lake community.
Next up is Woodland Elementary School. Woodland continues to be very active and busy with their students. Art-tack students had an art show displaying all of this year's artwork at Woodland. Mr. Schultz coordinated grades 4 and 5 Field Day for their students, and grade 4 students attended a field trip to Alair State Park. The band and chorus students performed their spring concert for parents and guardians recently, and Ms. Wohner coordinated Woodland-Mill Lake Unified Game Night. The school is looking very forward to celebrating their grade 5 students moving up to the middle school next week. Third graders from Mill Lake visited Woodland for a tour of the building, and lastly, as part of the school's SEL incentives, students earned a Lego outdoor picnic.
All right, next up is Brookside... Is Barclay Brook. Barclay Brook would like to recognize five staff members who will be retiring at the end of the school year. Congratulations to Irene Barata, school psychologist; Kavita Tenaja, special education teacher; Karen Wasden, basic skills teacher; Kim Martini, special education paraprofessional; and Angelina Tesorio, special education paraprofessional. The school is so grateful and thankful for all that they have done to help the students throughout their years, not only at Barclay Brook but in the district. You will all be greatly missed, but we wish you all the best in the next chapter of your life. Barclay Brook had Field Day on Friday, June 7. The weather was absolutely perfect, and the students had so much fun in all of the events. Thank you to the PTA for sponsoring the dump tank, which was a student favorite. The physical... A special thanks to physical education teacher, Mr. Luckenbill, for organizing all of the events, and all the parent volunteers who helped to make the day a success. The Barclay Brook-Brookside PTA held a fun run at Barclay Brook and Brookside on May 31. The students had so much fun running and walking with their friends, and the PTA raised over $12,000, which will be used to sponsor programs and activities for the students at Barclay Brook and Brookside. The top two fundraisers from each school were able to serve as a principal for the day. The winners from Barclay Brook were both kindergarten students, and they had so much fun learning the ins and outs of Barclay Brook. Barclay Brook will host its annual Great Kid Breakfast tomorrow morning. This special breakfast is held for any student who won a trimester Great Kid Award. Students are invited to bring two guests for the breakfast before the school day begins and will be able to take pictures with the Monroe Falcon. During the month of June, the school is celebrating big transitions, including the kindergarten and preschool end-of-the-year shows, the second grade core... And second grade Core Memory Day. The whole school will join together for a clapout for the second grade students as they walk over to Brookside for a tour of the third grade.
Moving on to Oak Tree Elementary School, May 31 was their fun-filled Field Day extravaganza filled with activities for students of all ages. Many thanks to Mr. Bukima and Mr. Kendall for their hard work organizing this event. June 6 was their Seventh Annual Healthy Living Night, where hundreds of their students and their families attended and participated in wellness stations. Outside, they could visit with representatives of their community, including the EnviroMobile, the Police Department, the Fire Department, and the EMS Department, and then continue to explore their newly refreshed garden. In the gym, there were so, so many activities to visit, including face painting, tastings provided by the cafeteria services, a photo booth, and the list goes on and on. The night culminated with teachers dressing up in oversized blow-up costumes to race against each other on their playground. It was a fun night for all. On June 12, all Oak Tree students participated in a Mix It Up Lunch Day as part of one of their earned celebration days throughout the year. Students were able to picnic outside with their entire grade level and then play. Grade 3 students are participating in instrument testing this week as they explore what instrument options are available to them in grade 4. Kindergarten celebration is taking place on June 14, and grade 3 celebration is on June 20. It's the Oak Tree way of wishing their students well at Apple Garth and cheering on their kindergarteners before they begin grade 1.
Next up is Apple Garth, and for Apple Garth in the month of June, the school had its PTA Book Fair on June 3 and 4 with a successful buy-one-get-one free sale. The Monroe Township Library Youth Services Department visited the school to conduct book talks and get students excited about summer reading titles. Grade 5 took their annual field trip to the Philadelphia Zoo. Apple Garth was recognized as the... At the Middlesex County Commissioner Meeting last week for being in the top 10 out of the 112 schools in the county for the amount of food donated through their annual replenish drive. Thank you to the families for their generosity. Abid interviews were conducted yesterday with 5th graders interested in the program. Tomorrow, Apple Garth is honoring two students and their families as starfish of character after the students were selected for... From a rigorous application process. Friday, the PTA is hosting an annual game truck and ice cream treat for the 5th graders, and a special thanks to the PTA for that. The 5th grade Moving Up ceremonies are being held Tuesday, the 18th, and Wednesday, the 19th, at 9:45 in the morning. The PTA is sponsoring a trip to Frog Bridge for the 5th grade celebration. Apple Garth wishes a wonderful summer to all the families and thanks the 5th grade families who will be moving up to the middle school.
Next up, we have Brookside Elementary School. The Brookside chorus and band students did a wonderful, wonderful job performing at the spring concert on June 3. The students at Brookside continue to impress and are doing their best during each period of the school day leading up to the final day. The students have earned many incentives such as activities with the principal or vice-principal, lessons with the music teacher or media specialist, a grade-level picnic, and cosmic bowling. Brookside Day is June 14, and the 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade students will be working together on a character education SEL project. On June 20, Brookside will be holding their Moving Up ceremony.
Now, moving on to MTMS. On Tuesday, June 4, eight representatives from the CO4E Zero Program at Monroe Township Middle School participated in the school's first official Vex Robotics Competition, the Battle of the Bots. The Battle of the Bots took place at the Cedar Drive Middle School in Coltsneck and hosted Ocean Township Middle School and Key Court Middle School in addition to MTMS. MTMS is the first team from Middlesex County to ever participate in this event. On June 4, in collaboration with the Monroe Township Police Department, MTMS held its annual 6th grade lead Field Day. A state police helicopter landed for the students and police officers, interacted with the students in various activities. On June 7, MTMS participated in the annual torch run and raised over $2,500 in the process. On June 10, the 7th and 8th grade band concert was held in front of a packed house. On June 14, MTMS will be hosting the annual 8th grade dance. They are anticipating over 500 students in attendance and look forward to a great night. June 18, MTMS will be hosting the annual 8th grade award ceremony. Awards will be given to over 70 8th graders, and the school looks forward to meeting their parents at the ceremony. On June 20, we'll be holding the 8th grade graduation at 3:00 and 5:30. Gowns and tickets have been distributed to 8th graders over the past two days.
And last but not least, we're going to move on to MTHS. Senior prom took place on June 7, where the students danced the night away with the theme of 24 karat magic. The graduation for our seniors will be taking place on Friday, June 12, at 3:00 PM at the Cure Insurance Arena in Trenton. The students of MTHS have been ranked 45th in the state for SAT scores and ranked 28th in the state among schools with general admissions. Final exams will be taking place throughout this Friday, the 14th, to next Wednesday, the 19th, with makeup exams taking place on Thursday and Friday next week, which is the 20th and 21st. A huge, huge congratulations to our class of 2024, and I have a wonderful senior sitting to the right of me right now who will be graduating. We'll miss them very, very much. Thank you all for listening. Have a good evening.
Thank you both so much. As was mentioned, tonight is Hetvee's last meeting with us as our Student Board Member Representative, so if we could just give her an extra round of applause? We do have a special resolution to read tonight in honor of Hetvee's last meeting, so I'm just going to read it. It says, "Whereas Hetvee Thacker has served with distinction on the Monroe Township Board of Education, and whereas through her leadership, the Monroe Township Board of Education has gained fresh insights into student concerns, student priorities, and what is on the mind of young people in the community, and whereas she has further contributed to the community by serving as a valuable spokesperson, sharing the student perspective at board meetings, and whereas Hetvee's exemplary commitment to fellow students and the school district has promoted clear communication between the board, district administration, and the student body, and whereas Hetvee has maintained a professional decorum at board meetings, shown respect to board members, and strive to learn the proper etiquette of serving on the school board, and whereas she has demonstrated a commitment to advancing the education of all students without neglecting her own responsibility to strive for success in the classroom. Now therefore be it resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education recognizes Hetvee's dedication and commitment to advancing educational opportunity and open communication between the board, district administrators, and the student body, and be it further resolved that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education extends their sincere appreciation to Hetvee for her dedicated service on the Monroe Township Board of Education, and be it further resolved that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education extend their best wishes to Hetvee in all of her future endeavors."
Thank you so much. Thank you. It's been an honor to serve.
The next item on our agenda is our presentations for this evening, so we're starting off with our retiree recognition. Do we have... Is this going to be something on the screen?
Yes. It should be coming up. Or maybe not. Well, while we're waiting for technology to... We always say, "See?" You don't need technology, technology needs us. We had an opportunity throughout the various different board meetings that occur monthly to recognize our Falcons that are flying. That is the expression that I always say. And because this is our last Board of Education meeting officially for the school year, we're very excited to have many of our retirees that flew back to their home so that we can recognize them. So, once that comes up, if not, I'm going to go ahead and just call the names, and we're very excited that people were able to come here to be recognized. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your dedication. Thank you for working with our children in every capacity, whether you are here as a teacher, support staff, custodian, cafeteria employee. I love the expression, although we steal it from whoever said it. It takes a village. It really does, and we are so proud that we're able to wish you well on your next endeavor as you fly as the Falcons that you are. So, for no further ado, I'm going to go ahead and call the names, and we are so excited that you have come back here to be recognized as you should be. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. So when you hear your name, please come on the stage and be recognized, and I know a lot of you really don't like that, but I'm so glad, as Ms. Bora shakes her head, I'm so glad you have to do that. So we're going to start with our night facility staff supervisor, and we'd like to have... Everybody calls Bob, but I will say Robert Lenford. Please come forward. Next, custodian Apple Bog School, Martha Lencik. Ms. Irene Barata, school psychologist, currently at Barclay Brook, but she's been everywhere because we have to share the world. Kavita Tenaja, teacher of special education, Barclay Brook School. Karen Wasden, teacher of basic skills, Barclay Brook School. Lois Kaschewicz, Secretary, Brookside School. I get to say my very own for many, many years. Ms. Deborah Forrester, school nurse, Monroe Township Middle School. Another one that I had the pleasure of working with for many, many years, Mr. Edward Malkowitz, lead custodian, Monroe Township Middle School. Everybody's looking at us, though. Stanislawa Kreska, custodian, Monroe Township Middle School. From Oak Tree School, Patricia Gendres, Principal-Secretary. Rochelle Epstein, special education paraprofessional, Oak Tree School. Shereen McCoy, data processor clerk, pupil personnel services. Conchetta Anzaldi, special education paraprofessional, transportation. As we continue with positive, wonderful part of our board meetings, we get to recognize more children. So as you may... As you may have noticed, over the last four or five board meetings, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we have been able to acknowledge children for service-oriented things, community-oriented, giving back to the community, academic prowess, exceptional... Exceptionality in various, various different areas, and tonight is no different. So with no further ado.
Good evening. I'm Jim Higgins. I am the principal of the middle school. I am very fortunate to have a wonderful staff, even more fortunate to be able to honor some of those staff today. So I would like to invite up Ms. T. Drake. Ms. Drake is a... One of our physical education... Ms. Drake is one of our physical education teachers. She is a driving force with our Hoops for Heart. This year alone, she raised $30,000 for the American Heart Association. In addition to that, she works with, whoa, I lost it for a minute. We just ran. The torch run, she just had me running it. The Special Olympics torch run, she raised $2,500 for the New Jersey Special Olympics. So everything she does is community and for the students. My next wonderful staff member, clap please. My next wonderful staff member has been, we've been together for 15 years now. She is wonderful and she is the driving force behind keeping one of our students' memory alive. She runs Ohm's Day of Optimism. She is heavily involved with the Ohm 5K and she is, keeps everything positive every day. And through her efforts, Mr. Kristi Fasaki. She has optimism on her shirt. My next staff member, have not been with him for 15 years, but I have been with him for three years, and he works side by side with Ms. Fasaki and will eventually take over So one of our students, through Ms. Drake, has raised over $6,500 alone for Hoops for Heart over the last three years, and I felt he had to be honored. Young Mr. Leo LaForte, if you're here, come on up. So our middle school history bee, we had some success there. First place in regionals and the national qualifier, Faisal Jaber. For our middle school geography bee, again, Faisal Jaber, second place regional, national qualifier. I'm in between, my glasses can only see so far, so close, I'm in between right now. We have Ajun Bora again, come back here, a national qualifier. And young Mr. Kevin Yoban, national qualifier. Middle school science bee, first place regionals, national qualifier, Venkata Bhishan, Yalla Valori. TSA State Competition College of New Jersey, third place Flight, Raj Patel.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Zach Maralda and I'm the supervisor that oversees our competitive robotics program. And for the next recognition, we would like to recognize four staff members and four students that were a part of our piloted Zero Period Gifted and Talented Computer Science and Robotics Program this year at the Monroe Township Middle School, which began in September as a part of a grant program and then continued on through the school year and culminated with our middle school's first ever competitive robotics competition, in which we participated and finished first place out of 18 teams, which was a tremendous accomplishment. So we would like to celebrate the students, but before we do that, I would like to recognize the teachers. And just for context, these four teachers, three of which are elementary fourth grade teachers and another which is a language arts teacher, knew very little about computer science and coding more than 16 months ago and did over 60 hours of professional development training over this time and learned some of the highest levels of computer science and robotics applications despite having no prior experience, which just proves to show you that teaching is teaching and content is content and that good teaching can trump all other content preparations. So I would like to recognize Ms. Caleb Bianco, Ms. Victoria Dewey, Ms. Alyssa Smorbush, and
We also want to announce the kids' names as well. Anish Mosker. Alisha Manthamdar.
So we move to MTMS Fall Sports Fest Outstanding Player Award. If I have any coaches, I know I see Mr. Vodovski. Any other coaches, please feel free to join me. Boys soccer, we have Dylan Cabrera coached by Mr. Chris Thurman. Girls soccer coached by Ms. Colleen O'Grady, we have Alexa Giaquinto. For girls volleyball coached by Mr. Scott Sims, we have Juliana Caliandro. Girls cross country coached by Mr. Gary Snyder, we have Isha Mohan. Boys cross country also coached by Mr. Gary Snyder, we have Camara Kupos. MTM Winter Sports Outstanding Player Awards. Any coaches? I will let Mr. Vodovski introduce his own athletes. For boys basketball coached by Mr. Scott Sims, Dylan Cohen. Girls basketball coached by Eugene Giaquinto, Valentina Francisco. MTM Stridsports Outstanding Player Awards. Boys volleyball coached by Mr. Scott Sims, Patrick Mullin. Baseball coached by Mr. Gary Snyder, Michael Cinkay. I'm going to ask Mr. Torino to come up and introduce his athlete. Girls track, I jumped a gun, sorry. Girls track coached by Ms. Margaret Day, Iman Saidu. And boys track coached by Mr. Ben Reason, Uvraj Damapuri. MTMS Athletics Special Recognition, official MTMS Athletics logo design created by Ryan MTMS Sportsmanship Award, Aiden Smith. And our second outstanding, but not equal, but second outstanding student athlete, Alyssa I'm handing over to Dr. Higgins from the high school.
I've been asked by our producers to stand up on stage. I'm not being vain. This is for our viewers at home, so the camera's not going back and forth. Thank you, my name is Kevin Higgins, I'm the principal of the high school, and I'm here to present you our honorees for our spring sports season. We've had a very successful athletic season at the high school. We are ending our spring season with the same success that we had in fall and winter. A couple of highlights that we had in our spring season that are not in the presentation tonight. Our baseball team upset Ulbridge, which is always a good thing. Ulbridge was the number one seed in the state tournament and Monroe advanced to the sectional finals where unfortunately we lost to Jackson Memorial High School, but it was an amazing accomplishment. Our unified track and field, yes, our unified track and field. Unified track and field competed in the NJSIA Unified State Championship Track Meet at Franklin High School. Our 4x100 relay took third overall in the state. They were represented by Matthew Attire, Victor Angelovski, Devin Makaraja, and Arav Modi. Two additional student athletes medaled in the 100 meter, Victor Angelovski took second place and Adrian Kubek took sixth place. All spring sports have concluded at this time with the exception of our boys track student athletes. Steven Barbera was actually running in the meet of champions tonight, and I just got a text that he placed 16th in the state in the two mile. So congratulations to him. Congratulations to all our coaches and student athletes this year. And Mr. Barrandico apologizes he had a daddy-daughter dance tonight that he couldn't make, so So I have the pleasure of announcing our honorees. If we have any coaches, our coaches can come up front. We'll start with, in athletics, we'll start with our boys, spring boys volleyball team coached by Ms. Victoria Steck. We have Joel Abraham, all-division, all-conference. Wathim Kotha, all-division. And it is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Matt Alzuski, our boys tennis team, also our girls tennis team coach.
All-red division, Anish Khorpadi. And the boys team also won the sportsmanship award for the red division.
For our softball team coached by Ms. Marissa Boatman, we have Brielle Zarzki, all-division, and Ava Kwikowski, all-division. For our boys lacrosse team coached by Mr. Joe Yanoni, we have three all-conference honorees, Jordan Lasert, Salvatore Marchionne, and Joseph Conacetti. And our all-division honorees, Jake Ivanchik, Arav Manapa Nanania, and Nicholas Chiketti. For our girls lacrosse team, we have Juliana Dowd, all-division. Julia Giaquinto, all-conference, all-division. Ria Salum, all-conference, all-division. Nicole Turco, all-conference, all-division. Under the leadership of Mr. Charles Diskin and Mr. John Legrazzo, our boys and girls spring track had a number of honorees. We have Kesha Gandhi, all-division, girls track. Kayla Impursia, all-division, girls track. Elise Peña, all-division, girls track. And Anania Rajah, all-division, girls track. For the boys, Steven Barbera is all-division and conference for boys track. Matthew Lucas, all-division and conference for boys track. Mon Catell, all-division and conference for boys track. And Ayom Kam Salud, all-division and conference for boys track. For our golf team, under the leadership of Coach Mark Pierce, we have three honorees, Jack Manfree, all-conference and all-division. Krishnan, all-conference. Ashwara Sentil, all-conference. For our flag football team, which has been in existence for, I think- For our flag football team, which has been in existence for I think three years now, they are very successful. We have Esmeralda Castellanos Jimenez, honorable mention. Evangelina Francisco, all-conference. Avery Labasca, all-conference. Isabella Sidman, all-conference. And Nicole Turco, all-conference. Our boys baseball team, we have all-conference and pitcher of the year in the conference, Zach Wallace. And all-division Harrison Lawland. Thank you all very much.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dawn Graziano, the principal at Applegarth School, and I have the honor of telling you about an award that our school won this year. So all of our schools do a wonderful job of educating the whole child through social and emotional learning and character education lessons. When I first started at Applegarth, Adrienne Shanfield approached me about working to become a school of character. I was there for about five minutes at the time, but she was very motivated to do this. So after four years of very hard work and school improvement, we finally achieved a designation at the state level in 2023. Mrs. Shanfield moved on to the high school, and the torch was then taken by Ms. Nicole Shepherd, who had been on our committee for several years. This year, we achieved recognition on the national level. All of this is due to the hard work of our character education team, which is being recognized here tonight. Many thanks to these teachers and to the parents, students, and community members who helped us to achieve the designation. We plan to continue the work past the recognition, because the changes to our school to reflect the importance of being a person of good character will persevere for years to come. The staff members to be recognized, only some of which are here tonight, are Ms. Samantha Farkas. Ms. Tom Gardner. Ms. Tatiana Garnerri. Ms. Ashley Vizio. Ms. Laura Orchard. Ms. Tara Polino. Ms. Radhika Patel. Ms. Chelsea Sax. Ms. Valentina Ceremba. The originator, Ms. Adrienne Shanfield. The person who took it over, Ms. Nicole Shepherd. Ms. Lauren Surk. Ms. Ashley Quinby. And I think she's here tonight as well, Ms. Susan Boza. Congratulations to this core team of teachers who brought this honor to Applegarth.
Hello, I'm Dawn Graziano, and I am the principal of the wonderful Applegarth Elementary School in Monroe Township, New Jersey.
FISH is the character education program that we implement here at Applegarth. And the first letter is F for friendly. Our staff and students are kind, compassionate, caring, grateful, and empathetic.
Our next core value is I for inclusive. Some of the ways we do that here at Applegarth are to treat others with respect, be tolerant of others' differences, to use good manners, and to ask others to join in.
Our third core value is S for supportive. In some ways that we practice that is giving time to help those in and outside of our school, listening to others, and encouraging them as well.
Honesty is our fourth core value. In our school, honesty is very important. This focus on honesty helps build trust and respect, making our school a strong and friendly place.
Our students had the opportunity to work on a service learning project with the help of the Monroe Township Senior Center. Seniors from the community came in and students were able to interview them on their life stories. After, students were able to write biographies about them, and they were compiled into our book known as Monroe Marbles.
Earning recognition as National School of Character is a tremendous honor. It confirms what we've always believed. Applegarth Elementary School fosters both academic excellence and strong moral character. Here, students, families, and staff work together to achieve and flourish.
Very much, it was such a nice evening celebrating all of everybody's wonderful accomplishments, and we wish our retirees the absolute best. We hope that you enjoy your time. Our next item on the agenda is our committee reports. Is there any committee member wishing to give a report?
Ms. DePain.
Ms. DePain.
Thank you. The Citizens Advisory Committee met on June 6, 2024. Goals and objectives were discussed by the committee. A draft letter was sent out to the committee members, and Dr. Lehman introduced and spoke about what he thought would be a good start for discussion. He suggested that the theme of the committee for the first year be finance. He outlined what he thought would be potential tasks for the committee to work on the first year. The finance issue was also pulled out from our strategic plan, which some of the results have been coming in. A timeline was suggested. The members agreed that we would like to finish the letter and the application by the August meeting. The committee would be chosen and ready to proceed in September. Committee members will be chosen by a lottery system. Since we would like committee members from all genres in the community, we will have one lottery for students who will be seniors, having one representing Jamesburg. One lottery for seniors from the senior communities, and one from the rest of the communities in Monroe. To include a representative from Jamesburg also. It was agreed that the committee should have 12 to 15 members, not including board members and administration. Mr. Merlada, I was told, is already working on the letter, and we'll be setting up a section on our district website designated for the CAC Committee. He will put the letter together with our suggestions and the application on the district website. And you can go on and apply for a position, and the lottery system still has to be worked out. More information to be forthcoming after the July meeting, thank you. Does anybody have any questions or anything? Okay, thank you very much.
I just wanted to add that after we had that meeting, I did have my...
No.
Loud enough. Right there. There we go. Oh, no, it won't be that loud. I just want to let you know where we're at. So this afternoon, or actually, I guess this early morning, late morning, early afternoon, I had my last final liaison, superintendent's liaison meeting with our wonderful students, and they are grades six through 12, and she's smiling because she's one of them. And we did talk about the specific committee and how we're very excited, and although we want to welcome all of our students, we thought a good starting point would be to have the students, who would be what we call our rising freshmen. So they would be eighth grade going into ninth grade, 10th or 11th, or next year's 12th, so a rising senior. And we asked that if they're interested in being on this committee, to please email me. Additionally, we asked them if they would like to bring a friend, and we specifically discussed Jamesburg. How important it is that if they happen to be friends with students of Falcons that are our Jamesburg Falcons, we'd love to bring them on board. And it also mentioned that to the superintendent, Dr. Valani. So we did talk about that, and I want to let you know that I did do that, and I will be happy to continue with that in September if we do not get any feedback between now and then.
Great, thank you. My pleasure.
Any other committees wishing to give a report? Ms. Alvarez?
I have two reports. I'm going to start with policy. The Policy Committee met on Thursday, June 6. Present were Ms. Ratner, Mrs. Ratner, Mr. Zeichner, Mrs. Fabiano, Dr. Chanley, and Dr. Lehman. The revisions to Bylaw 0155 discussed at last month's board meeting were made with additional language clarifications following discussion. The bylaw is on the agenda tonight for the second and final read. There was discussion regarding whether the creation of remote work policy would be appropriate. Concerns regarding equity and accumulation of unused sick time were noted. The administration agreed that a remote work policy would not be appropriate at this time. Dr. Chanley further stated that since no remote work policy exists, the creation of a policy prohibiting remote work would not be needed. Finally, Dr. Lehman shared that the state is asking districts to create a remote school day plan. However, there are concerns with how this could properly be executed, particularly in the case of snow days, where there may not be enough notice to ensure all students have the appropriate devices available to them to access remote instruction. This concludes my report.
Any questions for Ms. Alvarez?
I have one question. So the origination of the discussion on the remote work policy was, and I heard the meeting was, it started with Dr. Chanley Sickley. So where do we stand today with respect to any administrative employees being able to work from home? So is it a no-no completely?
Correct.
And are there hours defined, or as per contract? Okay.
Any other reports?
Should I do my personnel?
Sure.
Okay. The Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, June 5, 2024. Present at the meeting were Mr. Piero, Mrs. DePain, Mrs. Fabiano, Dr. Lehman, and Dr. Chanley. The administration continues to work diligently to fill the vacancy list, and interviews will continue throughout the summer months. The two positions that were on the ballot question, which was approved by the voters, teacher of business and teacher of technology education, have been filled. The recommended hires are on the agenda tonight for approval. We have several resignations on tonight's agenda, including two certificated staff members who have resigned, a physical education teacher and a math teacher. These positions have been added to the vacancy list. There was no reason provided for their resignation during the exit interview. There was a brief discussion on the implementation of a four-day work week pilot for summer of 2024. This concludes my report. Any questions?
No?
Okay, do I read the resolution now? Okay, so there's a resolution to go along with the Personnel Committee report. It says, be it resolved as recommended by the superintendent of schools, that the board approves the proposal of a pilot program to operate a four-day work week for our schools in July and August 2024, subject to a mutually acceptable agreement with the MTEA.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Bora, second by Ms. Alvarez. Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
No.
Ms. Ratner?
I need to abstain.
Ms. Sharma?
No.
Mr. Zeichner?
No.
Ms. Fabiano?
No.
It does not pass.
Any other committees wishing to give a report?
I have to.
Go ahead, Ms. Bora.
I'm going to start with the shorter of the two, and I apologize, they're both pretty long. The Curriculum Committee met on June 6, 2024. The board members in attendance were myself, Ms. Alvarez, Mr. Zeichner, and Ms. Fabiano. And the Curriculum Committee discussed, started with a review of curriculum documents. Dr. Merlada presented the Business Law Curriculum Document, which was a complete rewrite. This is offered from grade 10 to 12 and contributes five credits towards practical arts. Mr. Merlada shared the various standards the curriculum is aligned with, and the various collaborations and curricular extensions that help make the course experience very hands-on and experiential for the students. After this, Ms. Rust presented three curriculum documents for astronomy and aerospace. These were two half-year courses which are now combined into one starting this year. She explained the honors chemistry for grade 10, and finally, psychology, which is offered from grade 10 to 12, which is becoming an increasingly popular elective in the high school, and there are plans for offering more sections in the coming year for the elective. Ms. Rust also presented a new textbook for adoption for honors world history and honors world studies. All current staff members that teach this subject were part of the selection and adoption of this textbook. There was a brief discussion on the program of studies, which has been redone and made more user-friendly in the past year. There is extensive amount of information on it, and I urge parents and students to review this together to know the choices you have available in our high school to pursue an educational path that is tailored for your students' interest and future goals. The next item on the agenda was an update from the middle school principal, Dr. Higgins, on the proposed CHAMPS program. This is an acronym for Character, Habits of Mind, Accountability, Motivation, Planning, and Self-Esteem. The program is based on 2020 New Jersey's Student Learning Standards for Career Readiness, Life Literacies, and Key Skills. This is a step in the right direction to benefit all students as they transition to middle school. This incorporates avid techniques that not just a handful, but entire class will benefit from. This course is going to be a full-year course, replacing the half-year rotation between Spanish and project-based learning. PBL elements are included in the CHAMPS program, and Spanish will become part of the sixth-grade cycle. And only chorus students will not be able to take it as a cycle, as they do chorus instead of cycles. Areas of focus for this program were identified over the years with inputs from various stakeholders, including parents, teachers, and students themselves. Next on the agenda was a three-year English Language Learner Plan, which is on the agenda tonight as Language Instruction Educational Plan for 2024 to 2027. This was presented by Dr. Rozell. It's a regulatory requirement both for the state and federally, and if we have more than, we have more than one multi-language learner, then we have to file this, and there has been a significant growth in that student demographic in Monroe over the recent years. The report indicates our current count in the district is 201 multi-language learners. I was amazed to hear that after Spanish, Telugu, a language from the state of Andhra Pradesh in India, is the second most popular language in this cohort of learners, requiring our district to create a waiver in Telugu recently, as shared by Dr. Rozell. In her report, she shared the various aspects of this plan and the work that the district has done over the years to cater to our increasing population of multi-language learners. I was personally very proud to see the initiatives that the district has taken towards ensuring the students that move to this country at any level of elementary, middle, or high school are provided resources to help them adapt quickly and enable continuity of education at a level they were accustomed to, while quickly and consistently bringing them at par to the New Jersey standards. So, thank you to the staff. Last on the agenda was an update by Dr. Lehman on multi-tiered system of support, MTSS program, and all-associated contract renewals. This is a federal grant-funded initiative that has been extremely well-received in our district. And Dr. Lehman emphasized the benefits of this multi-tiered approach to promote student achievement and success, while ensuring the right interventions are provided to the right students at the right time. This pilot has slowly increased efficiencies in our intervention programs using database decision-making tools and processes, some of which are up for renewal. This program has decreased special education referral and placement rates, and Dr. Lehman gave an excellent bird's-eye view of the MTSS program. And I urge you to watch the meeting to get a better understanding, because a summary cannot do any justice. So for all the things mentioned so far, please do watch the meeting. We have another year of grant funding for this program and the associated tools. This concludes the curriculum updates. Any questions?
Mr. Piero?
I have a question with the, I've got a couple calls from parents asking me about the PBL with the math.
Can you talk into your mic a little bit more, just pull it down?
I have a couple questions in reference to the PBL math. I received some calls from parents asking that if the existing PBL math classes are still in place and we're increasing it, or are we eliminating these classes?
Can I answer that, Ms. President? Or would you like to answer that? So from the committee discussion, what Dr. Higgins explained to us is that it's incorporated. It's inbuilt into the CHAMPS program. It used to be one, it used to be two marking periods for the students, and now this is part of the CHAMPS program. It's project-based learning, and when this was started, and please, if Dr. Lehman and Chanley, you can add to it. When this was started, the focus was in maths. The district has really advanced in its math capabilities.
To increase the math scores, correct?
Yes.
That's why they did it.
We've already come far ahead in our math capabilities, but there are other areas that the students can get attention on.
So we won't be doing them classes, and we're eliminating? So we won't be doing them classes, and we're eliminating them?
You want to?
The way I understood it, they asked me, is when they watched the meeting, they took that the only piece being in this is the personal finance, they told me, and personal finance and civics. And they were under the impression that the existing PBL classes are being eliminated.
I would like, Dr. Chanley, clarify that.
So, and I welcome any parent that has a question. I think it's fabulous, they feel comfortable reaching out to you, but they should reach out to the building administration, as well as the supervisors, to get this specific correct information. So PBL was started many, many years ago. I was actually the person who started it. Problem-based learning is not a curriculum that's only math-driven. It's really about project-based, having students work together. They use NASA, actual activities through NASA. And what has happened over the years is it's gotten more and more away from the mathematics and more just become an opportunity for kids to work on projects. In addition, we have the finance literacy, financial literacy piece. So what the CHAMP's will do is, problem-based learning, which is not a requirement of the state, we do not need state approval, we do not need county approval, is going away, and instead, it's going to be replaced by a CHAMP's class that will still have financial literacy, will still have analytical thinking, problem-solving. But in addition, it will also have character education at Avid, which is the core strategies, writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and literacy. One of the things that we learned is a lot of parents feel very strongly, why are these fabulous best practices only taught to children in Avid? A handful of children, when every child could benefit. So that is exactly what's happening. The civics piece, however, is, we were actually ahead of the game. Robert, let me see, Mr. Goodall was the superintendent at the time, acting, and I actually met with him. We put civics into place, I want to say, and don't quote me, two to three years prior to the state requirement. We were very excited to have it. Civics, the requirements, and that is state-driven, and the guidelines are not in any way being affected in negative. Instead, it's being placed into the history class in the seventh grade. It's my understanding that it'll be enthrall throughout, but the standalone piece will be done at the very end of the seventh grade. So there is nothing that a child is going to be missing with the change of this course.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Ms. Ratner?
Yep. So, one clarification, I guess, because I know we spoke about this at the liaison meeting. The students who are currently in Avid, they will not be getting Spanish in sixth grade.
They've never gotten Spanish.
Well, because it was with PBL math, right? So they had half PBL math and a half Spanish.
But they went to Avid for the full year, so they didn't have it either.
So they had two, they had two periods of Avid? Because my understanding was that Avid was in lieu of the cycle. Is that correct?
I'm making sure, I'm looking at Dr. Higgins, because I have not been in the building three years, so I want to make sure I give you accurate information.
And then there was the second period that was half the year PBL math, and then half the year that was Spanish.
Correct.
And the Avid class was in lieu of the cycle courses. So they were still getting that, but I-
I'm looking at him, because I'm not sure, I want to make sure I give the right information. That is correct. So what happens is, when you're in certain classes and you, like, for example, I want to use another example, so LAP, Language Advantage Program. Correct me, Mr. Higgins, Dr. Higgins, if I'm right or wrong, make sure you correct me. If it's my understanding, they also don't go into the cycle program, is that correct?
LAP gets pulled.
That gets pulled?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think the key is that unfortunately, there is, we know that there are certain classes, certain people that have elected to go into chorus, because it's not zero-period-like bands, and he's shaking, he said yes, for people that can't see, as well as, what's the other class? LAP and math. So Math Advantage Program and Language Advantage Program, you wouldn't get it as well. So those people would not get the extra Spanish that's going to be put on the cycle wheel. That's correct.
So this is additional Spanish? I thought it was just the one marking period that would be in the cycle.
That is correct.
Okay.
So they would not get that.
Right.
But there would be an additional, but in the seventh grade, instead of it being partial, it's going to be a full year.
Right, no, my question though was that those students, I think where my confusion is coming in is, those students are currently getting Spanish, because I thought it alternates with PBL, which is a separate period.
The Avid students.
Right, the Avid students, the chorus students, they are currently getting Spanish.
Come up to the microphone, so you can be properly recorded. Thank you.
I would say get it from the horse's mouth.
So currently, PBL and Spanish are its own course. Avid is an elective that takes place with a cycle.
Right.
Moving forward, instead of getting two marking periods of Spanish in sixth grade and two marking periods in seventh grade, all students will have four marking periods, the same four marking periods in seventh grade, and a continuous instructional block for the year. Majority of students that are not in chorus or Avid will get it in the cycles next year.
Okay. And there's no state mandate for a foreign language in sixth grade?
No.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yeah, is the CHAMP instruction still in the process of being developed? Or has it already been developed?
So the curriculum writing for it, like with many courses that we implement, will be written in the summer, and we put it on for board approval. And we are fortunate that the individuals that will be teaching the classes have elected to write the curriculum.
So they're still in the process of developing?
Yes, and that's a common practice with many courses, both at the middle school and the high school level.
Any other questions?
I have issues, I mean, I'll be quite honest with you, that they're in the process of still writing the curriculum when, you know, it should have been, it's like putting the cart before the horse. From my perspective, I would think you would write the program, and then, once you have it all together, that's when you present it. It just, doesn't, doesn't, doesn't sit well with me in terms of curriculum development. And I've been involved in that.
So they've spent the springtime, they have a course outline, and then they will fill in, just like we do with curriculum writing, and most of the courses that you see on there, we spend the entire year getting feedback and/or developing outlines and revisions, and then the document is actually input into Rupcon Atlas, our online curriculum management system. That's when all the standards are connected with instructional times throughout the school year. The assessments are put in place, so that the teachers that have it will have digital access to it as they return to school. So that's our standard revision process. Writing's done in the summer, and then feedback from stakeholders is done leading up to that summer work.
Because you need, you need some disciplines to drive the creative thinking skills and the problem-solving skills. You know, math is certainly, in terms of problem-solving, math is a good methodology to use for problem-solving. I mean, you can use it in other areas, but math is more germane to mathematics and perhaps the science. You know, I hope they're using the right, that they're correct disciplines in order to implement those problem-solving techniques, as well as some of the creative thinking skills and the critical thinking skills that go along with it.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's my concern.
And they've also, I believe it was last week, had a half-day professional day where they met all the teachers that are going to teach this. They met to also, again, finish developing that outline, pulling resources together, and preparing themselves for the document writing this summer.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Ms. Alvarez?
I just have a concern, like, I wanted, I would have hoped to have seen this a little bit sooner in the curriculum, you know, committee, because I feel like, you know, it's kind of in June, and now we have to approve the curriculum writing, so I would have liked to seen it a little bit sooner, so we had more time to discuss. That's all.
Anybody else? Okay, any other committees wishing to give a report?
I have one more. Unless you want to go first, Ms. Ratner?
You can go, you have it out.
Ms. Bora?
The Finance and Shared Services Committee Minutes. The board members in attendance were myself, Mr. Piero, Ms. Sharma, and Ms. Fabiano. Administrators in attendance were Dr. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, and Ms. Allen. The committee met on June 6th. The committee reviewed the bill list, which was, at the time of the meeting, was approximately $10 million, $80,000. There was a brief discussion on aid in lieu given to parents who send their kids to private school for transportation costs. This is paid twice a year. Also in the bill list are several tuition reimbursements for staff, and Dr. Chanley mentioned that all checks and balances are in place for verification before these reimbursements come to finance for approval. Next, the committee discussed the lease purchase of equipment. Every year, the district does a five-year financing of equipment needed for the upcoming school year, but cannot be budgeted for. Each year, a previous lease wraps up, and a new one starts keeping the district cost for this lease at a constant number to meet these needs. The committee did not agree to the proposed security golf cart for $22,000 and has urged the administration to look into purchasing used carts from dealers that lease to Monroe Golf Communities at a much cheaper cost. Mr. Piero mentioned this has been done in the past. The committee also questioned the high school electronic sign that needs to be replaced for $55,000. We strongly feel that this need can be fulfilled through community donations or possibly a shared service agreement. The sign provides a lot of advertisement opportunity to whoever we partner with. The board president, Ms. Fabiano, will be reaching out to the Monroe Education Fund and we hope that the district will also do an outreach to community businesses for donations toward this. An ask was also made to consider applying for electric bus grants to help with the cost of replacement buses in the future years. The cost of computer equipment, which is part of this lease agreement, is not for iPad replacement, that will be coming up next year. The items approved by the committee are on the agenda tonight and include computer equipment, copiers, bottle refilling station, transportation vans, HVAC at Brookside, maintenance of plow trucks, sorry, maintenance plow trucks, security systems, AEDs, and two transportation vans. The amount for this lease would be approximately $2.2 million. The next discussion was about the cost of graduation venue. The district was looking forward to having the graduation ceremony for the class of 2025 in Rutgers Arena. Unfortunately, the cost of using that facility went up by 33% this year, and as a result, the difference between Trenton and Rutgers is now $15,000 versus $42,000, which is a significant cost that cannot be justified by the board. And hence, as it stands today, the graduation will continue to take place in Trenton for 2025. Luckily, the high school administration had booked the same date at Trenton to cover our bases, and so the calendar will not be changing, even though graduation venue will change. The committee then started the discussion on the 39 contracts that were up for renewal. I would like to note that some more contracts were added for approval post the committee meeting and are all part of the agenda tonight. The new contracts were SisCloud for data backup. This is a replacement of a current contract with another provider for the same services, but at half the cost, giving the district a savings of $13,000. Then there was a new contract for Integrated Care Concepts, which is used to provide educational support to a student receiving medical care in hospitals. Other notable discussions were on the auditor contract renewal, and given the input from the committee about the quality of audit presentation last year, the BA's office is reviewing this currently and will bring it to the board next month. I do want to say that I wrote these minutes this morning, and there have been certain changes, so that I'm going to read it as I wrote it, and then I will mention the changes that have happened post-writing the minutes. The contract renewal for Porsio Bromberg for the legal counsel indicated an increase in the hourly rates, and as a result, the committee has requested Dr. Chanley and Ms. Allen to look at quotes from other firms. This contract was on the agenda tonight to maintain continuity of services, but we can terminate the current contract and switch over to another firm at any time without any financial implications. There was a slight increase in the cost of the contract for Final Site, which is originally Blackboard Connect, but it comes with improved upgraded services, which will allow us to have a major website overall in July, and has been long overdue, and will improve the overall integration of various aspects of administration and communication in our current website ecosystem. We questioned the Energy for America contract to see if there was an overlap with the work Honeywell ESIP program will be doing with us. As it stands today, the service provider has helped us virtually regulate temperatures in school and deliver energy cost savings. Since ESIP is only getting started, our understanding is that they will eventually evaluate EFA and determine whether to continue or not in the future years. Finally, the committee had a brief discussion on what, on, discussion on a decision to move elections from April to November, sorry. Finally, the committee had a brief discussion on what a decision to move elections from April to November entails. From a finance perspective, the April elections allow the district to go out for a budget question for the upcoming school year. If that is not needed, we should definitely move the elections to November. The administration has been requested to help the board understand what our budget will look like in 2025, 2026 school year. While no one has a crystal ball, a budget philosophy discussion in August will set the ball rolling on this discussion by talking of areas we need to focus on for the coming year and look at preliminary numbers with some extrapolation for inflation and contractual increases. There has been some ambiguity about the allocation of the $2.7 million permanent increase in the budget this year through the public question. We are not sure if they can be allocated for any budget line item, or they have to stay allocated for the items that they were approved for, which is courtesy busing, after-school sports, et cetera. The conversation has begun, and the administration has assured the committee that this is a top priority for them in the coming months to get the board as much information as we need to make an informed decision for our students and the taxpayers. This afternoon, there was some change to the agenda regarding the Porsio contract, and I just want to share that as a public update. As mentioned, we had asked the board office to start looking at other quotes for the legal firm, because the cost of Porsio had gone up. Ms. Allen has had several recommendations, and Mrs. Fabiano reached out to the board with the best recommendation and asked to add that to the agenda tonight. This has not gone through any committee deliberations. This was only presented to the board at 3:00 this afternoon. But as a result, the contract on the agenda is not what was finalized in the Finance Committee meeting. So that's the change that happened post-Iwrote-the-minute. So I just wanted to share that with everybody.
Any questions? Ms. Ratner?
Yes, so I did get to watch majority of the Finance Committee meeting. I have two questions. The first is, I had heard the discussion regarding ReadSound, which I know had come up last year as well. I did take a look just after, I only listened to it today, to see that there are high school events that we are spending a fair amount for as well. I had pulled up just one of them, which was from March of 2024, which was $7,000 for the high school musical. So I definitely think that this is something we want to look at. My question regarding ReadSound, besides trying to find a more financially, fiscally responsible way of handling this, are they amenable to working with equipment that is not their own? Because that is something that I've heard that there could be a concern about. So I heard the idea of purchasing certain microphones through the lease purchase. But I just wanted to ensure that if we are purchasing these but still utilizing ReadSound, they're going to work with those, or we're still going to have to rent it through the ReadSound company.
So the intention is, we agree with you, the cost is exorbitant, and at times, ReadSound is a must. The purpose of putting in the lease purchase for those microphones is to not utilize ReadSound. So I'm not even asking them if they'll work with the equipment, because the point is that we're going to purchase it so that our own employees will be working with that equipment, and therefore, we would not need to spend the money that ReadSound requires, because they are a union shop, and we cannot, they have a max, they have a minimum amount of money, which is extremely costly. So that should answer your question.
Okay, so just to follow up, so knowing that we still utilize them at the high school, even though we have the high school coordinators and things of that nature, would the end goal be that we are handling all of our own sounds and all of our own lighting in-house? Because even with the equipment, there's still the people that are running the equipment. So I just wanted to, I guess-
So that's a separate question from what you just asked me, correct?
I guess it sort of falls along those lines, because I, I just want to make sure, like, if we're purchasing this equipment for the future, which makes a lot of sense, until that point, are we still utilizing ReadSound until we have everything in place for both schools?
When it is appropriate, when the equipment that we're purchasing can be utilized, we will not be utilizing ReadSound. That equipment is being purchased and will be utilized predominantly in the middle school. We have had at least three meetings with Mr. Teig, Mr. Maralda, Mr. Snyder, to really come to a consensus about how we could still have the quality we have for our children and still try and save money, because it's so expensive. So I can't give you a definitive answer of what the future holds. If someone asked me, could we in-house do what ReadSound does? The answer is, I hope so. But as far as, I'm letting you know that the equipment being purchased will be utilized in place of spending the money on ReadSound. What will happen in the future? We have to just keep on moving forward and see what works. One of the concerns was, when you utilize ReadSound, if the equipment has any issues, they take their equipment, they fix it, they bring it, it goes, it comes. Once we start owning our own equipment, we have to make sure that we, you know, it's properly kept as it should be, who's in charge of it. But I can't foresee the future. I mean, eventually, would we love to be able to do everything in-house? The answer, of course, is yes. The answer, of course, is yes, because it's savings. Is that the goal for next year? No. The goal for next year is to utilize what we spend our money on, not utilize Reedsound, so we're not double spending, and when Reedsound is utilized, it's because we're not using our own equipment.
So I believe there are two conversations here. One is, Reedsound is expensive. Two is, we're buying the equipment, and then we're still using Reedsound. Will they use this equipment and maybe give us a discount, right?
No, the answer is no.
So the answer is no. I was just going to say. The other conversation, we did deliberate on this as a board last year, where we had another, we compared two different providers, and I don't know if you saw this in the committee, but I mentioned this then also, that the cost was coming out to be almost the same, but the trust in the other provider with our equipment was nonexistent by our staff. So that was the reason, I think, we continued on with Reedsound.
Right.
We don't, and I'll just finish really quickly. From what I've observed is that we don't use Reedsound for all levels of shows and programs. There are some smaller ones where even in, you know, middle school and high school level, where we, they'll use that mic, because I did question the microphone, the body microphone. I saw it in Laura's list, and I was like, oh, that's a high cost. But we do use it internally, where we're not using an external provider. Our own staff is, our interns and our staff is running those and the use of that equipment. But we do need body mics for those kind of performances. So it, yes, it's the cost, but our programs sometimes just, you can't do without it.
Yeah, I think my other portion of this was just knowing the facility usage policy. And Ms. Allen, correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm not a hundred percent sure of this, but that it does say, any outside organization that comes in to use our facilities also needs to use our, our sound and lighting vendor. So I guess they would just be charging that, like, we're sort of the middleman in that case, right? And they'll bring their own equipment for the outside organizations. Okay.
And that's not new. What you just said has been here for years.
Oh, no, no, I know. That's what I was just saying, because we're sort of hoping to reduce the cost for district, but we also have that in our policy. So that's where I just wanted to see how that was settled. The other question I had, I know that was a very long question. Regarding the election change, I think that sometimes it's crazy in our school environment that we have to consider what we're going to spend next year, the year before. Unfortunately, like, I guess that's just how it's been for so long. But from what I do understand, and I think we sort of briefly discussed this last month, if it came to the point where we had to go out, which I don't think any of us want to do, we could still move our election to November. Worst-case scenario holds a special election in March, which costs the same as having that election in April, but that would be like a last-case scenario as opposed to planning for that, if that makes sense.
Okay, so if I understood this correctly, Ms. Ratner, you're saying, move the elections to November. If the need arises for more money, oh, for a second question, do you, so, the only caveat there is, does the state consider that as a school election in March, and so now there cannot be a school election in November?
No, it's a special election. Maybe Mr. Gagor already can weigh in.
So then that's a great possibility to discuss and consider, that leaves it out there. We don't have to spend the hundred thousand dollars. We'll only spend it if the budget is short, and then we need to find out what that process looks like. How far in advance do we need to file for the special election? And we know, we just need to let them know sixty days in advance to move it to November.
Right.
Sixty days in advance of the April day.
But still, but still holding a special election would still be a cost. It would be, right, and what I'm saying is, it'd be the same cost if we were to have it in March or to April. I wasn't sure if moving the elections from the Board of Ed election as well, I guess, as if there was an additional spending question from April 2025 to November 25, gives us still the option that if we were doing the budget and there was a situation where we had to go out for an additional spending question, we could do that in March.
And keep the, and move the board election to November? So having two, just so I'm understanding.
There'll be two elections. One will be a special election, just for a question.
Right, one will be a special election for the budget, and the second one will be in November.
And there'll be, the one will be a school election. We will then get the opportunity, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Allen, to put two questions out next year. Because we will have a school election in November. So if we had, say, for example, something happens with the kindergarten resolution, and you want to put a kindergarten question out in November, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud here.
Right, and I, I'm very clear, like, I don't think we should be looking at going out for either special election and spending that money.
We're just discussing possibilities, right?
Correct.
Right. Just to be, to know what are the tricks in our hat, way in advance instead of being, you know, getting caught off-guard. I think this year, the key to what, doing things differently based on how we did it last year is really to see our finances much well in advance, and then see what is it that we can do in terms of, you know, election processes, you know, just, just the solutions out there. Going out to our legislatures and getting the money way before we have to go out to the public for a question, right? If we don't know that we need money up until February, then it's too late to go out and look for state funding, but if we know in November, we have three months to knock on every single door and see if something can be done, right? So, yeah, thank you for that insight, though.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Yeah, I just have one question, and it goes back to the Spanish, if I, if I might. I apologize, I was adjusting my hearing aids, and I didn't hear something. Well, it happens, you know, the age, it's one of those things. But Dr. Higgins had mentioned the Spanish, is that, did he mention just grade fifth and seventh, they're going to offer Spanish? Just fifth and seventh, no sixth grade Spanish?
Seventh and eighth, and sixth grade on the cycle.
They're going to cycle Spanish to sixth?
Sixth grade cycle, and then it'll be more intensive in seventh, the eighth grade in preparation for the high school.
Oh, so they'll be exposed to it.
That's correct.
Okay, that's, thank you. Thank you.
I mean, we could always make chorus students zero period like band, and then chorus can be on the cycle like everybody else. I mean, we had it for many, many years. We had both band and chorus as a zero period, then we had it within the school day, then we had it back to being a zero period, and then we made only band zero period, but that is a reality that's something within the schedule, does not need a board approval, but it is a consideration. Dr. Higgins wants to take a look at that.
Any other questions? Trying to see, trying to see everybody. Okay. Ms. Bora?
If I can just, if nobody else has questions, I just want to say, for the, from the Finance Committee perspective, for the contract with the legal firm, that has not gone through deliberations, but it is on the agenda tonight, and all the board members got that as an email this afternoon, so I just wanted to let you know that. All the options were shared in an email this afternoon at three o'clock. I personally did not get the time to look at it, and so I will be abstaining on that one, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody else is aware it's not gone through the due process, so in my opinion, it should not be, it should not go through without the board deliberations, but I just wanted to share that because I did not say it clearly enough last time.
Anybody else? Any other committees wishing to give a report? Mr. Piero?
Building and Grounds Committee, Transportation and School Security. On June 5th, at 7:00 PM, we met at the Monroe Township High School Media Center. Present was Ms. Fabiano, Ms. Alvarez, myself, Ms. Ratner, Dr. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, Mr. Tagg, Ms. McDonald, Dr. Kevin Higgins from the high school, Dr. James Higgins from the middle school, and Ed Selby from security. First off, a Girl Scout project proposal was made from Druvi Soniji. The Girl Scout candidate and current Monroe Township student presented a project to construct birdhouses at the Barclaybrook School. The committee members and administration were highly complimentary of this proposal, and Ms. Soniji's efforts and offered our full support for this project. Second, we talked about the removal of the Monroe Township Middle School cardio, cardio trailer. Administration provided us an update to the committee regarding the scheduled removal of this trailer. It will be completed prior to June 30th. The removal costs negate savings for the upcoming year. However, beyond that point, we will be at an annual savings for not having to use this trailer. The committee noted that they will evaluate the status of the existing eight classroom trailers at the middle school during the upcoming school year, once we get our updated demography study. So for now, we will be keeping the trailer classrooms until we get a demography study to determine if we don't need them. We also had a proposal of Monroe Township Middle School's stopgap discussion with Dr. James Higgins. We reviewed two proposals. First was modifying a second-floor chemical storage room into a small group instruction space and modifying existing first-floor administrative office space with new doorways to provide better use for those spaces. The committee agreed with utilizing the arch tech of record during the 2425 school year to evaluate the first-floor project with the doorways, but due to the project cost of the second-floor renovations, we, we will not be doing that at this time. Faculty use of billing review, administration provided an annual overview of, for events and income, as well as engaging in a discussion with committee members regarding policy and regulations. The committee will recommend to the Finance Committee adding a surcharge onto the use of billing fees post-midnight events, having a mandatory stop time at 1:00 AM. So we decided as a committee, we would allow people to utilize the school till midnight. If they wanted to stay till 1:00 AM, we would put a surcharge on the event, but all events must end by 1:00 AM, and that is only on the weekends. Any weeknights events at schools have to be over by 10:00 PM. The high school digital sign we talked about also, and we decided to put that on hold. We're going to try to get donations for that sign. We talked about the gravel lot at the tennis courts across from the high school. Mr. Tagg talked about, you know, it's about twenty-three thousand square feet. It would be a lot of money to pave that, so what he's going to do is, every year annually, he will top it off with gravel and smooth it out for the upcoming school year. We spoke about the relocation of the public board ed meetings to the middle school. Dr. Chanley provided us an overview of why this meeting should be held at the middle school in lieu of the high school auditorium. Basically, the high school is used, and it would have been hard for us to fit our meetings in. Dr. Chanley and Mr. Selby, the Director of Security, also stated that they felt this was a safer environment to have the meetings instead of in the library at the high school. So we decided to move the meetings to this venue here. Also, I've seen on Facebook, some people have been posting that we're, we're going to have a large security bill and all this for these meetings. Actually, having the meetings here costs less than last year's meetings at the high school, since the previous board president was hiring the Monroe Police at a hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars an hour to be at these meetings. Now, we have two of our armed security guards here, which will actually be a savings for We did a transportation overview. Obviously, there's a big problem right now with transportation. We're down about fifteen routes a day until the remainder of the school year, so our Director of Transportation, along with Ms. Chan, with Dr. Chanley, is working to try to fix that for next school year. If we have to, we will be bringing in more outside contractors to fill the routes if we can, staff them with our own bus drivers. Along with that, she will continue to use the Blackboard Connect to try to advise parents when the buses will be late or if there'll be delays in the bus routes coming, either coming to school or going from school. Administration also noted for the upcoming school year that they're exploring eleven triple-stacked routes and four single-stacked routes for the high school to be outsourced. So basically, that means the triple routes, the eleven routes, would do in elementary, a middle, and a high school, and the four single routes would only do, that would just be for the high school. And we also are using other transportation for sporting projects at this time. So that is it for my report. Anybody have any questions?
Ms. Bora?
Not at the meeting, so I have a question. The cardio trailer, are we, is, so, is the cardio lab moving within the building?
Yes.
So we have enough space for it?
So this was something that was brought to my attention by Dr. Higgins, that we didn't need utilization of it, so we made sure to put in the budget the cost to have it removed, because there is a cost, before we could acknowledge the savings. And what we did was, we confirmed that the equipment would have specific places to go with no cost into the building to make sure that they have the proper electrical. So everything was done in advance to make sure that we could remove the cardio trailer with still being able to utilize the equipment that's ours and no additional cost, and we could just let it go, and everything could be utilized within the school.
So it's all going to be moved to one space, or is it different spaces?
I believe it's two different spaces, Dr. Higgins, you shaking his head, yes, two different spaces.
But from a student perspective, they'll continue to use it at the same time.
Full utilization.
All right. The other question was the stopgap project. We, the ask was for engineering study to get started on that?
So there's, there's, right now, where the old vice principal's office, there's an open area and two offices, and what Dr. Higgins wanted to do was, to go through the one office, you have to walk through the second office. So the idea was to put a doorway in a hallway and one on the other side, so then each individual office would have their own doorway. So if three counselors are there, the way it is now, if a counselor's in the middle office, which used to be the secretary space, to get to the one office, they would have to walk in, so this would make it three separate, four offices, but they would be separate, so you wouldn't, otherwise, right now, you have to walk through the old secretary area.
While I'm very supportive of that idea, it just makes all the sense. I think my hesitation or my question right now is that, so we have the budget right now to do the study, the architectural work on it?
All we're doing is the doorway. We're not doing, all we would be doing is putting a doorway in one wall and a doorway in the other wall. The issue is with Mr. Tagg.
So is there no design, like, what is the cost to this?
Yes, Mr. Tagg said.
What's the cost to this?
It would be a minimum cost for us just to do the architectural piece, and he believes that the one hallway, which is a block wall, his staff could do. The other entrance, where there's a window, until he got the architectural thing, there may have to be some stipulation. So we didn't agree to actually do the work yet, just to get a price on, from an architect of the cost value to doing it, and then Mr. Tagg would be able to figure out if it was something we could do in-house. He, he's pretty confident the one door we could do in-house.
That we should be able to do in-house, right.
But the second doors, I believe, all windows.
Correct.
So that would have to be a little bit of a walk instruction with a doorway.
So while I'm confident we, probably because of the work that we're doing right now at the golf site, we'll probably be able to do this in-house, it's the cost of the architectural.
He said it's very minimal.
He said it's very minimal. And I did want to make one comment, because we always want to gear things towards children. So the reason why Dr. Higgins even proposed this is that the current space for one of our counselors is literally the size of a small group instruction. So that is really appropriate. In the past, it's been small group instruction, then we ran out of space, then we had extra space, we moved things around. So that particular counselor would then be moved into, let's say, the open area that would now become a closed area, and that classroom would then be opened up for a resource room, because right now, the way it works with small group instructions or resource rooms, English and mathematics are a hundred percent, shake your head or ninety, a hundred percent, they have their own rooms, English, English, mathematics, but science and social studies were available. So you could be going into other classrooms, so it would give an opportunity to move an individual who really just needs a desk and a couple of chairs out of this sized room. So that was the reasoning for going forward. And then Dr. Tag, excuse me, Mr. Tagg felt it was very minimal because we employ them as our architects of record.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other committee reports? Ms. Ratner?
The Legislative Action Advocacy Community Engagement Committee met on June 5th. Board members in attendance were Ms. DePaine, Ms. Sharma, Dr. Peck, Ms. Fabiano, and myself. The staff members present were Dr. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, Mr. Maralda, Mr. Snyder, and Mr. Berendika. The first agenda item was community outreach relating to athletics and the arts. There was a discussion about the methods that are currently utilized to promote events within the community, with a focus on sharing methods that have been successful, as well as areas where there is room for growth. There was a discussion about the new website that will be rolled out over the summer. Mr. Maralda shared that it will have some more user-friendly features, such as the ability to integrate the calendar onto personal devices. Mr. Berendika and Mr. Snyder also shared some of the tools that they are using to communicate with the community regarding their programs. One idea that was brought up was to see if we can possibly incorporate the Jamesburg School District into our district mailing list, so that some of the students there can receive emails regarding our events. Following this, there was a discussion regarding protocols for residents to donate various items such as athletic equipment, musical instruments, technological devices, and more. It was suggested that if anyone is interested in donating any item, to please email our community at monroe.k12 nj.us email address. This will allow the inquiry to be forwarded to the appropriate. This will allow the inquiry to be forwarded to the appropriate person. The next item of discussion was a legislative update. I shared some of the highlights from the legislative committee meeting held on June 1st with NJ SBA. There have been several bills that were recently passed or had some movement. Some of the items discussed were S530, which is Requirements Regarding Lunch Applications, A4003, which is a new bill created regarding School Funding Task Force, and A2784/S2548, which is revisions regarding the November election additional spending proposals and what you would be able to do with that. There were two assembly members in attendance at this event, Andrea Katz from District 8, as well as Tenille McCoy from our district. And the suggestion was made to reach out to each of our legislators to share with them what our concerns are and see what can be done at the state level. We also briefly reviewed the results from the delegate assembly, and Ms. Sharma shared her experience as a first-time attendee. The committee has decided to move forward on a resolution regarding impact fees, which has been submitted to the attorney for legal review. Finally, the committee discussed bagels with the board. Ms. Fabiano provided some details and insight as to what this could look like. The idea would be that community members could come and share their thoughts and concerns with us in a more casual environment. We would hope to visit as many communities as possible. Finally, I did have a quick update. After we had our meeting, I reached out to Assemblyman D'Angelo to discuss and determine his availability. I am pleased to say that he has responded, I guess his aide responded, that he plans to attend our next Legislative Action Community Engagement meeting that's going to be held on July 24th. So I'm very excited about this, and I'm hoping that we can have a productive conversation with him and share some of the challenges that our district is facing. And that is everything.
Thank you. I know that this has been a conversation amongst all of us of how can we get our legislators to hear us, so I'm very excited that this is a huge step in that direction. And, you know, it's one conversation, but we know that one conversation can get us far, so that's wonderful news. Thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions? Or Ms. Ratner? Okay, seeing none. The, is that all the committee reports? Yes. Okay. The next item on the agenda is our public forum for agenda items only. Anybody wishing to speak? You can come up to either microphone. You'll have four minutes to speak. Please state your name and municipality for the record.
Somebody's got to speak. Brian Fabiano, Monroe. I just had a question. You mentioned about the budget and not knowing if the tax increase, the over cap that just got voted in was permanent, and I'm not sure how you don't understand, maybe I'm not understanding it, how you don't understand if that is permanent. I mean, I assume the attorney could also give guidance on that. So I'll give you my questions first, or questions and comments, then you can answer it. But I think what I've, I continue to hear from the board is that you want a way moving the election based on what the needs of the district are and the fact that you may have to go out for more money. I think, in my opinion, as a taxpayer, that's the wrong way to approach it. I think you have to approach it in a way to say that we just went above cap for the first time since cap was put in place. We went to the township last year for a match of the rod grant for Apple Garth. We went to the township for, you know, a shared service agreement for the football field not too long before that. The fact is, no matter if the money comes from here or comes from across the street, it comes from the taxpayers' wallets, right? Many, I mean, obviously, you all live here, right? I mean, and our administration lives here, too. So I'd like to see you get out of the thought process of, well, you know, we need to see what, we can go over cap again, and get into the thought process of how we can get back to staying at the 2% and start to talk about what cuts can be made, if cuts can be made, right? And that, everyone always jumps to when you hear cuts, that it has to be teachers, and districts around us are unfortunately in a much worse position from a state funding perspective, and they've had to make drastic cuts. I don't think we're there yet, thankfully. But I think there needs to be, from a board's perspective, more talks about what can we look to cut. We're seeing some of that happen already, which, and I congratulate you on looking at contracts with firms that we, that we're working with. I think there was talks, you know, not only about the attorney and, but other companies as well, right? About how we can get down some of those costs, but I'd like to see more in a mindset of getting back to not having to go over cap because that's going to continue to cost the taxpayers. And, you know, again, what I said, when it comes from across the street, it still comes out of our pocket. We're seeing a tax increase from the township this year. Naturally, not all of that is because of what had to come to the school district, but I don't think it's the right way of thinking to keep saying, well, you know, we were probably going to have to go over cap. So I'd just like to hear an answer to, how do you not know the tax increase above cap that just happened? How is that not, because my understanding is it's permanent. That's a permanent thing, and buses are not going to go away, so if you allocate that to the areas that you had to fund and you had to go out for that additional cap, then you should know that that's going to be there. So anything else, we're either going to have to go above, as you're discussing, or we're going to have to make some cuts, right? So that's my question.
Dr. Chanley?
Sure. I'm going to just make a comment about the first, and then I'm going to, if I may, I'm going to give it to Mr. Gagliotti, and then I'll come back to your second comment about cuts, because I'd be happy to speak on that. So when we went, $2.7 million, it specifically was allocated to after-school buses, sports, a specific business teacher, a specific autistic teacher, a specific parent, so forth, and so on. I don't need to repeat it because you guys voted or didn't vote for the question. What the comment was made, and we went to Mr. Gagliotti and this through Ms. Allen, was you're absolutely right, it is permanent. So that $2.7 million is now added to the budget. The question was, and then I'm going to talk about the cuts after he answers, the question was if we were over, if we wind up being over again, and I'm going to talk a little about employees and salaries and so forth, then are we permitted to take the $2.7 million, put it in the budget, absorb the salaries, because originally that was salaries for clubs and sports, which we would not do? However, pay-to-play, I'm going to use the expression pay-to-play, for the transportation. So we wanted a legal opinion. First, we went to the county, who didn't have the answer, and told us to go to a lawyer. Ms. Allen reached out to the county business administrator, am I correct? And he said, ask your attorney. So the question was, now that the money has approved by the taxpayers, we say thank you. He has $2.7 million to pay for this, 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 and this. Does that mean permanently we increased our budget by $2.7 million and we could never say to the taxpayer, we need money for, I'm just going to use transportation for sports, because that was in the original question? So that is why I'm now going to give it to Mr. Gagliotti, and then I'll come back to answer your question about the cuts.
Well, the questions about the cap should be directed to the business administrator. As far as your description of how the process works in terms of what the voters have approved and whether it ties your hands to do something different with the money, your description was absolutely right.
Correct. So my description means that you would not be able to utilize that money. That's why, so it's not that we didn't know, we didn't know what we didn't know, and then we asked the questions, because we were given some, the business administrator, the county levels really didn't know. So we automatically assumed the answer would be no, but we know it's an increase in our budget permanently, so does that mean, I would understand then, for the next 10 years? I don't, we can't use the money. We can never say to our taxpayers, we need X amount of dollars. Now, the next thing, did you want to?
Yeah, so I just had 39 seconds left, but.
Hold on, the policy check, the time was supposed to run.
Oh, okay, sorry, that's okay.
But I'm going to answer your next question, and maybe that will follow up what you're about to ask. So when you look at the concept of budget, and we have really, we meet weekly now, Ms. Allen, myself, and Dr. Lehman, we no longer want to wait. If we have to speculate and say X amount of dollars was for appropriations for last year, use that same number. If we want to turn around and say X amount of dollars is what we got from state aid based upon what's going on with the state, we pray we get the same amount, if not less. And we started having conversations, and I'm an out-of-the-box thinker, and I do agree with what you said, you have to start utilizing a different way to look at things. But I'm going to make this statement, and Ms. Allen and Dr. Lehman could correct me. The only way you have large sums of money in order to balance your budget, removed, and we don't like to use the word cut, we use the word prioritize, but it is a cut, is always through people, and here's the reason why. When you have a program, and I'm going to use the music program, I'm a big proponent of the music program. The joke was made by Dr. Higgins is Shari would not a music school, and I said, I don't care, make the schedule work, we have exceptional musicians here. Yes, we are a music school, because we were exceptional. Now, the high school is good, but at one time, the middle school was even better, okay? Why do you get that good? Because instead of having, and I'm just giving this as an example, I apologize if it's long, instead of having just a band director at elementary, middle school, and high school, we have what we call articulation or vertical teaching. What does that mean? We get the best. So if you're a trumpet player, you then had to do the trumpets, blah, blah, blah. Well, what does that mean? Do not quote me, for those that do, I don't know the exact amount. So instead of having, we have eight buildings, instead of having eight music directors, we might have 25, I don't know, 15, I don't know what the number is, we might have musical professionals because we rotate them through. So that's a program, but if we go and look at that program, that's a cut of people. The only way, and we came up with a dollar amount, so in the past, before we changed to the state insurance, when we looked at a person, a full-time equivalent, that's the verbiage we use, an FTE, one FTE equals, we used to say, approximately $100,000. So if they come in, depending upon what step they come in, let's say they come in $50-something thousand, health insurance for a whole family used to be $40-something thousand, that's $100,000. That is now changed. Now we utilize, and once again, this is an estimate, so I do not expect to be quoted, now we utilize approximately $80,000 to $85,000 for a full-time equivalent. That's how we do it. Now, some people come in higher, some people retire higher, and we bring people in less, so that's what you call.
Breakage.
Thank you. Breakage. I'm going to be quite frank, and I'm waiting, I give a recommendation, but I work for the Board of Education, and I do live here as well, that is true, so I am a taxpayer, too. The bottom line is this, once the decision is made where we're going, it will involve cutting of staff. Now, you are correct, it doesn't mean it will be all teachers. It could mean reduction in teaching staff, reduction in secretarial, reduction in administration. I don't know, we don't know what it's going to look like, but I'm going to say the statement, and we've already started having these conversations. Looking at programs, looking at professional development, looking at trips, that does not amount to any amount of monies. If we, if someone turns around and says, and we don't know yet, these are all just guestimates, because I know I tend to be quoted on Facebook. If we are short, maybe we won't be, but if we're short, because we know if you're giving a 4% raise to all the teachers, and you're allowed to go 2% above the tax levy, when we figure out what that number is, if we're short $1 million, $2 million, $3 million, $4 million, you're not going to get it by saying to the professional development staff, you can't go on a trip. You're not going to get it by saying, we're not going to contribute to the overnight stay when someone goes on a band trip. When you want to be able to save to meet your budget needs, money, it is full-time equivalents. That FTE may be a secretary, I'm not going to say no, it may be a custodian, but one of the things that we have here, and that probably lends to why we finally had to go over budget, is we are completely over-adequate in this, in this district. We give, we have parrots in kindergarten class, they're not required. We have ICR, two teachers in every single, I'm looking because Ms. Vorell is here, two teachers in every classroom that's ICR, it is not a state requirement. The IEP drives it. If you change the IEP and you give the children what they need, we do not have to have it. So the reason why I'm sharing these things is that if it comes down, and I'm going to use this expression, marching orders, I absolutely work for the board, if the philosophy winds it being that we are not going out for a question, make do, make it work, I'm making a statement, because it's factual for no other reason, employees, just like in East Brunswick, just like in other districts, will have to be non-employed. I am not saying only teachers, because I had a conversation with the East Brunswick superintendent, and it wasn't just, it wasn't, but the other thing that's very important to know also is we are not administration-heavy. So some districts have three assistant superintendents, six directors, we don't have that. Does that mean that we can't still look at things differently? Of course not. But to sit here, even though it's June, I'm so glad you brought it up, because we have to start having this conversation now, if we have our budget philosophy in August, and it's all based upon speculation, and I know that Ms. Allen likes to have firm numbers, but she can't, we talked about this, she cannot have firm numbers, they don't, they won't exist, but we're going to go, let's say, based upon last year's numbers, if it's $1 million, $2 million, $3 million, $200,000, I don't know what it will be, the conversation is going to have to be, as I rely upon Dr. Lehman, what classes will we not offer in the high school, and will that help us with 17%, which is a couple of thousand dollars? You know, if, if, I'm going to say this, if Holocaust studies, I'm purposely saying Holocaust studies, and there's only six kids in it, maybe we don't run that class. You know, maybe we look at our ICR model, and we no longer have two teachers in every classroom. I'm not saying that's what we're going to do. We will always meet the IEP, we will always follow the law. We won't have parrots in kindergarten classes unless they're over, I think it's 25, if I'm not mistaken, because it's not a requirement. So you're right, we're going to have to look at things differently, but it will have to be staffed. There's no way to get to a number that isn't the millions, and I'm not saying it's going to be, but if it is, you can't get it any other way, because we don't have, we don't spend that much money any other way than with full-time equivalents. And I hope that answers a lot of your questions. Thank you.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak?
My name is Sarah Aziz, I live in Monroe Township. I would like to urge the board to either table or vote down item BK number 17 and 18, which would require the board to spend $3,000 to hire two teachers to write the curriculum for the new sixth-grade course called CHAMP. In addition, the costs of five teachers to do this job would be around $300,000 for their salaries. Please remember that these teachers are currently employed by the district in their capacities as either math, science, or social studies teachers. What is happening to their positions? Will the classes be increased in size as a result of teachers being moved out of their content areas? These teachers were already board-approved for their content areas in May. So what happens if the CHAMP course is not approved by the board after the curriculum is written? Will their current positions be eliminated? If you no longer need two social studies teachers, two science teachers, and one math teacher, what will you do with them? Why were they already approved? The previous board just passed a budget where they represented to the community that the district needed three more positions. Was that absolutely necessary if the administration thought about eliminating five content-area positions? This needs to be addressed. The Oprah Secretary has not yet responded to an Oprah request regarding CHAMP made on May 18th, so the community has no knowledge as to why these teachers will no longer be doing the jobs they were contracted to do. At the Curriculum Committee meeting, Dr. James Higgins said CHAMP stood for Character, Habits, Mind, Habits of Mind, Accountability, Motivation, Planning, and Self-Esteem. I couldn't find an example of any school district anywhere offering this as a full-year course for middle schoolers. Based on Ms. Chanley's comment, her, Dr. Chanley's comments, her proposed course sounds like a combination of life and study skills. It covers skills that should be integrated into regular content areas such as the state of New Jersey prescribes. Chanley admitted that the supposed benefits of this course couldn't even be quantified. She even admitted that any teacher could teach this course. If any teacher can teach this course, why would the district just get a bunch of subs to teach this course or have teachers covering it on a rotational basis at an additional 17%? What unique training is necessary to teach this course? This has not been discussed at any prior meeting. This course does not appear to be based on an established evidence-based program. I think it's a huge mistake for our board to approve the spending of $3,000 to develop a curriculum for a course without demanding evidence that it provides measurable educational benefits to our students. The implementation of the CHAMP course will result in the elimination of the problem-based learning math class and the civics course, which is a detriment to our kids, as I feel that these courses are best left as standalone courses. I would like to know on what basis was CHAMP developed? Was the decision to implement this program driven by enrollment factors? If so, how? Isn't our goal to have smaller classroom sizes for the benefits of our students? So what are the numbers that would show what the new enrollment would look like without implementing CHAMP? Shouldn't that have been brought to the attention of the community before such a significant change was made? Dr. Chanley, did you select these content areas for this position? If so, on what basis were these teachers selected? Wouldn't it be better for both students and staff to leave them teaching in their contracted content area? Where's a job description for this, this teaching position? Why wasn't this course vetted before the previous board asked the community for more money? I was hoping Dr. Chanley could answer these questions.
Oh, I would love to answer these questions, I have to say. You're welcome to sit down unless you want to finish 41 seconds.
No.
So I'm going to wait for 41 seconds, because the clock runs.
You can keep running the clock.
All right. First and foremost, I have to make this statement. I don't know what the problem is with this particular course. As an educator, which you are not, we bear the responsibility of making decisions. We bring those recommendations to our Board of Education. However, I have been here for 21 years, I've gone to almost every meeting, I have never heard an individual so devout and so overwhelmed by having this conversation about a class about a class that's going to offer strategies that I am so excited about, because we have an avid program here. This is where it really came from. We have an avid program here, and I have heard from many board members, both in an environment where it's curriculum-oriented, or in an environment just where we've been chatting. Why is it that our children, that are either special education, or our accelerated children, don't have an opportunity to have these fantastic avid strategies? And I did have an answer for them. Because for whatever reason, Avid is a program, and based upon the certification and based upon what we do, it's just not afforded to a special education child. Now, we have some brilliant special education children that are truly SLD, Specific Learning Disabled or Disability. What does that mean? They could be absolutely brilliant, perhaps with the way they read, they invert letters, perhaps the way they hear, perhaps whatever they need. So basically, I'm saying to a special education mommy and daddy, your child cannot have the advantage of being in the Avid program. Let me go a step further. How about the children that excel mathematically, so they run all these accelerated classes? You know what? You're so super bright in math, I'm not gonna let you have an opportunity to have WICOR strategies. We don't wanna give you writing. We don't wanna give you collaboration. We don't wanna give you inquiry. We don't wanna give you organization. We don't wanna give you even extra reading. So what happened? We've been looking at PBL for years. Let me start off by saying, the Board of Education never approved the PBL program. It was approved through its curriculum like every class. Dr. Lehman can correct me. We approve everything. I have yet to hear you or any other person come up here to discuss all the other changes. What about all these other classes that we created at the high school? All these other classes that we created at the middle school? There's never a conversation. This is an opportunity to take quality, vetted, best practices through the WICOR program. That's what Avid is. It's a vetted program that has successful certification, data, quantitative, and qualitative. Taking those specific strategies along with financial literacy that currently exists, teaching some habits of mind and character education. You know, when I started as principal here 21 years ago, excuse me, because you'll write what I wrote, I am, let me correct myself. The assistant principal 21 years ago, I had a character ed teacher. She currently is the guidance counselor at Brookside. She was my character ed teacher in my building. We no longer have character ed. If you walk in that building, that was my building, all of our rugs are character education. All of our walls are character education. Why? Because we cannot just teach content. We have to teach skills, life literacy. We have to teach being able to exist in a world, being kind. We have to teach child how to organize. They have no clue. So I sit here, and I know I'm smirking, and I mean no disrespect, I truly do not, I, for the life of me, have yet to been able to figure out what has been shared with me, because I don't have Facebook, what has been shared with me through Facebook, what you continually come up here to say, "I don't understand why we are not saying we should have this as freshmen, as third grade." This is an opportunity. I don't benefit or not benefit if it occurs. I didn't hire those teachers. I no longer run the middle school. It's an opportunity to take a course like problem-based learning, which was embedded originally through math, because we had very poor math skills, which we no longer have, and instead of just making it math-oriented, taking that analytical thought process and adding it to the WICOR strategies, adding it to social graces of being kind and having character education, adding it to organization. Why you have a problem with this, and by the way, you sprouted incorrect information. It is not costing this district, except for curriculum writing, which we do for every course. It is not costing this district any money. Those teachers were already our FTEs. Somebody has to be in that class where the schedule works. So if we were to go back to PBL, nothing would change, except additional people would lose their job, because they wouldn't have the proper, the proper content to be able to teach what they need to teach. I don't know why you keep on making erroneous information, both verbally and public. I truly mean this from the heart. If they don't wanna approve it, I only make a recommendation. I work for you. If you don't feel it's appropriate, then you could deny the writing of that curriculum. We go right back to Dr. Higgins, and we say, "Make your schedule work. If people lose their job, they lose their job. If people don't lose their job." But there is no additional cost. And as a mother, or a father, or a grandparent, how you could not want every sixth-grade child to have an opportunity to have this type of curriculum is something that I cannot understand. I apologize for my long-winded response, but it has been eating at me, because, and by the way, my children do not go to this district. I do not benefit financially, emotionally. The only way I benefit is to know that I'm doing what is best for children, and that is my response.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Doug Poy, Monroe Township. You had a discussion earlier during your committee reports, I believe it was, about the board attorney. And I just hope that you're keeping in mind, as you deliberate what to do, the option of having an in-house attorney, which this district once had. So I just want to bring that up, that I hope that is one of the options that's being considered. Now, I'll deal with some very specific things that are in the budget. Most of these, I believe, are under personnel, under the superintendent's report. When I said in the budget, I mean in the agenda. Items ST and U. Items ST and U, this calls for the approval of a lot of personnel for the extended school year. And I know what the extended school year is all about, and I don't question, you know, the validity of such a program. But I was wondering, what is the total cost of this program? Is the board, are the individual members of the board aware of what this program is costing? And who and how is the effectiveness of this program evaluated? I know they've been in existence for quite some time, but it would be helpful to know the cost and how the program is evaluated. Item AB deals with summer work for the child study team. But it does not specify, and I don't know if it needs to, it does not specify the number of hours or days that's being approved. Item AI, and it's number 60 in that item. I think this is all about the clubs that we have. As I peruse that list, I ran across something, and I said, "What the heck is that? A Patriot Warrior Club." So I'm hoping that someone, maybe Dr. Lehman, can explain what the Patriot Warrior Club's activities are. That's a very strange name for a club. Item AL shows that you'll be approving four teachers to cover a new position in phys ed, with each teacher receiving an additional 17% in salary. And I was wondering, why not just hire a part-time phys ed teacher for four periods? Because if you take 17% of a teacher that's making a very high salary, and it ends up that the other three that you're taking 17% off also have high salaries, you might be exceeding the salary of a part-time teacher. But then, I don't know exactly how the health insurance comes into play for part-time employees. Likewise, you're doing something similar to that with special ed, if you just look a little bit farther down the agenda. And finally, you are approving the custodians for next year. And I was just curious as to how many days each custodian is employed, because it's not specified, and I'm sure it's in a contract somewhere. But you did specify that they're being approved for eight hours per day.
Five.
Okay? So it would be interesting to know, how many days are they actually working? And that's all of my questions. Thank you.
Okay. So I have a good mind, so we'll see how good it really is, because I didn't write that down. So I'm gonna let you know right now, when it comes to an enrichment program, we charge the parent. Okay? So any course, for when you see enrichment, in the summer school program for an extended school year, enrichment, we charge the parent. When you see an extended school year for our special education population, that is IEP-driven. So whatever the IEP says the requirement is, that is a cost that the district does pay for. In the past, when we had SA funds, I know that that was one of the things we were able to pay with. That is a cost. As far as the specific numbers, I think it would be appropriate, you know, to rather make Laura look it up now. She could email you, Mr. Poy, the specific answers, but I'm letting you know that it's in-and-out money when it comes to the extended school year for summer enrichment. ESY for special education is a requirement that we meet the needs of the IEP for the extended school year. We did go down one week, though, this year. So it used to be six weeks, now it's five, and it was approximately an $85,000 savings to the district. So that answers those questions. Regarding the 17%, we cannot get a part-time teacher. So when we do 17% versus a new FTE, full-time equivalent, it is a major savings. We had a part-time listed in the elementary school. I don't know how long it was, forever. We could not meet the needs, and if you recall way back, we even approved regular education elementary teachers. We confirmed with Ms. Christie that it was allowed. If they were teaching, I believe it was less than 20%, don't quote me the specifics, because we couldn't get a part-time teacher. So when we do 17%, it's always a savings. Regarding, let me go further. I can't talk in the Patriot Club. He'll have to talk about that, because I don't know what that is. And then you asked me, wait, let me take a quick look. The last question. Oh, custodians. So the custodians follow the, they're Teamsters. They follow a contract just like the MTA. And I would prefer Mr. Take to give you the specifics, but if I had to guess, eight hours a day, five days a week, full-time employee, and they follow a Teamsters contract.
That doesn't indicate the number of days.
Five days.
But you're saying five days a week, not a week.
They're full 12-month employees. Contract, the Teamsters follow a contract, to my understanding, of a 12-month contract. They're not like teachers where they're not here in the summer, so they work 12 months. And if you wanted to look at that contract, I would imagine that's probably online. And we're currently in negotiations with them, because their contract is up. I think I answered all your questions. Did I forget anything?
I don't think so.
I think I got them all. Oh, child study team. So the way it works is, if you'll notice, it says IEP. By law, you must have one special education teacher, one regular education teacher. I'm looking at you to make sure you correct me. Correct, and they're 115%. So they have to work X amount of hours, the child study team, but the teachers that come in for the IEP meetings have to get paid at the hourly rate as per the MTA contract.
And they're on an as-needed basis.
As-needed basis. So if you don't need them, they do not get paid, but they have to be board-approved in order to pay them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Warrior.
So Patriot Warrior Club, I'll read the description from the high school website, and then I'll just ad lib some other things that we've experienced. So it's a club focused on connecting and helping local military veterans and local veteran organizations. Each year, one specific local veteran organization will be targeted to raise funds for and generate awareness. The club also acts as a bridge to recognize current students to whom are joining the military and recognizing past students who have served and are serving. Club's open to all interested students that are interested in these ideals. They also have a significant piece in planning and supporting our Veterans Awareness and Veterans Recognition Day, which we just had a couple of weeks ago.
This was great.
And they're embedded in fundraising throughout the year, and any events, they're just a nice group of students that is always around to support any organization that needs volunteers and things. So it's probably been around three or four years. I was assistant superintendent. It was the first year I was on board that it was proposed. It ran its probationary year, had a nice turnout, and then became a full-fledged club.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Good evening. Chrissy Skirby, 21 Preakness Drive. Just a couple of questions. I noticed that during one of the committee reports, a resolution was read, and it was read as a recommendation from the superintendent. Curious as to why that is not listed in the agenda under the superintendent's recommendations to the board. Previously, I know that we have kept the agenda items-only portion of the public forum so that the public can weigh in on things that the board is going to vote on. That was one of the big reasons for keeping agenda items-only, because the public should be made aware of what action the board is going to take that evening. We did not know, because it was not listed in the agenda, and you did it during a committee report, and you took a vote, and you didn't afford the public the opportunity to comment and have any concerns raised for that. So I'd like to know why that was done. Is that a new procedure that we're doing, that we're going to start making recommendations from the superintendent in committee reports? Also, I would like to just voice my opinion on when we're starting to talk about what we're going to do next year as far as cuts in the budget. I think we need to understand from the business administrator and from the superintendent where we're at and what cuts we're going to be making. We have to remember, the community did speak in that vote. They were willing to increase their taxes to keep our programs and services in place. That's a big thing here in Monroe, because previously, referendums were voted down. The community came out and they voted to support our district and not to dismantle it, simply to save a few dollars in their taxes. So I would encourage this board to truly look at what you're going to cut and look at other districts around us. East Brunswick is a good example. Look what is going on in East Brunswick. They are tearing their town apart and their district by all of these cuts, cutting their assistant superintendent, cutting all of these teachers, cutting their music program. That is not what I want to see in our district, and I don't think our community wants to. They came out and voted to increase the taxes to keep busing and to keep programs in sports. I don't think they want to see major cuts coming, and I think that we need to be cognizant of that. We need to listen to our community before we start talking about, well, we don't want to go back out and ask them for more money. Why? If they're willing to support it and to keep our schools excellent and not dismantle our school district, why wouldn't we do that? Why wouldn't we give the opinion of the community, give the voters the right to say yes or no? And just with the CHAMP program, I want to echo what Ms. Boris said during curriculum. This is something that I know myself and her, as a parent with children in the district, have been asking for for years. The Avid program is amazing. It truly transforms kids to the next level. This is not getting rid of PBL. It was discussed at length at curriculum. This is taking what currently is there in PBL and bringing it to the next level. Why in the world would we not want to offer this to our children? We are supposed to be supporting courses and programs to excel our children. This is something that will do that. To Mr. Zeigner's point, putting the cart before the horse, you have to approve curriculum writers to write the curriculum. The course doesn't exist right now. You want to bring a new course in, you do exactly what this board did. You have a discussion at curriculum, then you bring it to the board to vote for curriculum writers. That's how the curriculum gets created. So I want to commend the curriculum committee and the administration for bringing it forth, and I hope this board will not take it out on the children and not pass the curriculum writers, because you want to save a few dollars. That would be a huge disservice to every single student in our district.
Thank you. Dr. Chanley, did you want to talk about the resolution?
So the resolution, and it was just something that we were going to try, and I totally respect the board if the answer is no, it's not an issue. So one of the, one of the board members actually brought it up in one of our personnel meetings, if I may say, may I say, may I say? Ms. Payne brought it up to say, "A lot of districts around us close the entire district for one day a week, and there winds up being a financial savings because of not having the buildings operating." So all we did was explore it. We know we have obligations, summer school obligations, obligations to the rec department, obligations to the extended school year. We know we're operating five days a week. So because we know it couldn't be done this year, we wanted to try, and this was my recommendation, and I'm fine with it not going forward, because it wasn't going even to affect central office. We wanted to try a pilot to say, what does it look like? Because we've never done it here before, so we don't even know, will it work? So that's what the pilot was. In response to Ms. Skirby's question, I can't speak on the procedure, but it was truly, we were told originally by legal counsel, it does not need a board vote, and therefore you wouldn't need a resolution. That is why it was not on the agenda. Then we had further conversations about it, and it was brought to us today that if for purposes of transparency, it makes sense to make it a board vote, because I wouldn't want to do it without the board's support anyway. Regardless of whether I, and I still think it's a good idea, and I still think it's something maybe we'll try next year, but we'll have advance notice of 10 months in advance if that's what we do. So we're not going to try the pilot, maybe, maybe not. But because legal counsel spoke with me at 5:00 PM to say, it doesn't require a resolution, but it's in the best interest to have a resolution, how would I do that? When you come out of closed session, the resolution could be written. So that is why it wasn't on the agenda for public to be able to see it, because originally, it was thought that it wasn't needed to be. So I can't speak to how matters are going to continue moving forward, but that is the specific happenings of exactly what occurred with that particular resolution. It was actually me that was driving it as a superintendent's recommendation, but we were told it didn't need to be a resolution. It was only a recommendation where, eh, makes sense to have the support of the board, and then further conversations with our attorney, not Mr. Gagliotti, another attorney from his firm. And then Mr. Gagliotti agreed that it's for best purposes, it should be transparent, and that's why it was added as a resolution. I hope that answers. And thank you for your understanding about the CHAMP's. I'm truly excited about it if we go forward with it. So, thank you.
Thank you. And just in response to the budget, this board hasn't made any decisions about the budget, but we have started conversations with administration and what our conversations will look like and how we are, I think we said August?
Yes, we're going to do it months in advance.
Yep, we started talking about bringing the budget philosophy out in August so we can begin these discussions with Laura, Dr. Chanley, Dr. Lehman. What we think our budget will potentially look like and how we can kind of make a roadmap going forward of, you know, the direction that we're heading in. So no decisions have been made, just want to be clear on that. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close the public forum. The next item on our agenda is the assistant superintendent's report.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment. This is the season of celebrations, the season of recognition. We are wrapping up the school year. We have all of our moving up ceremonies, our graduations, all of our class parties, we're turning in all our books. We're doing all those outstanding end-of-year activities. So I just want to congratulate any of our award winners, any of our recognized tonight, all of our student athletes for an outstanding year at the middle and high school level. And wish you luck over the summer. Congratulations to our 12th grade senior class, Class of 2024. We will be with you at the Cure Arena next week. And we'll be with the eighth graders moving up to high school. And Dr. Chanley and I are going to try and rotate through all the elementary schools so we can see our fifth graders moving up to sixth grade. It's just a really exciting time of year. So without getting into a lot of details, we've spent the past three months really recognizing, you know, all of our, you know, athletes of the years and all of our, you know, academic award winners. So just one final congratulation to our students and thank you to our staff for an outstanding year, all the support staff, all of our administrative team, our teachers. We have almost another school year in the books, and we are definitely looking into next year and the following year already. So that's just the way we operate at Central Office. We're, you know, months and months ahead of where we're really operating in in real time. So I hope everyone has a nice summer, and we'll see you in July.
So I'm going to echo his sentiment. I want to first off by saying that we are very fortunate that we are invited to participate in so many activities, and we go to as many things as we can. We have various different National Honor Societies that took place during our committee meetings that we weren't able to attend. I did want to acknowledge the National Honor Society induction, which I heard was a beautiful ceremony. I want to apologize that I was not in attendance, but President Fabiano was gracious enough to speak on my behalf because I was sick. So I do appreciate that, and that's what we try and be as far as a team. We try and all do what we can. I had an opportunity to go to field day in a couple of schools, I saw a couple of board members. I had an opportunity to go to various different events, and I got to end my school year today with the liaison with the superintendent's students, and they're absolutely wonderful. And we're very, very fortunate that we have just great kids. I will echo Dr. Lehman's sentiment to say, wishing our fabulous Falcons 2024 seniors a super flight as they fly on and move forward. We are very fortunate that we have fantastic kids. I don't know what to say, we're very, very, very lucky here. A wonderful shout-out to everybody that we've acknowledged over the last three or four months, as well as our retirees. It's always wonderful to see people, they're basically starting the next facet of their lives. And just all the different activities, we can't go to everything, but we really try. And a shout-out to our administrative staff, our principals, our supervisors, our directors, they just go above and beyond, and there's so many activities. One of the things that's near and dear to my heart, and Dr. Lehman, I'm going to speak for him, is the TAPS. So Transition to Adulthood Program that occurs in the high school. And the reason why we love to say this is because he was the principal of Woodland, and I was the principal of Applegoth, and then Monroe Township Middle School. When these students who stayed with us till they're 21, when we started the programs that we're so proud of, last year was really, I cried. This year, a little bit more controlled, kids come running up to you because they remember you. These are our children that we embrace through the different programs that we offer, whether it be extended school year or what we do. And we want to just continue doing that because it's really about the kids. So wishing everybody a fabulous summer, although we're here, we don't know who will be here. And we're just, we're really excited about doing great things, and we are absolutely having weekly conversations about what the budget looks like. And we're going to be making projections and forecasts because that's how we're going to have to move forward about what we need to do. And then we bring all the information because we want to educate our board, and then decisions will have to be made. And we are moving our budget philosophy presentation up from way into the school year, all the way it's going to be moved up to August, because we need to know where we are. And, you know, we need to know what we need to do for our children. And on that note, under Personnel for a 10-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached Personnel Items A through AO.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ratner, second by Ms. DePaine. Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call?
I have a comment, please.
Sure, Ms. Bora.
Item AJ, this is for the clubs at high school. I did send this note earlier to the administration, but I wanted to make a public comment about it because I feel like we need to have this discussion in one of our, maybe curriculum or committee meetings. There are about five or six items that I identify here that are related to our theater, drama. There's choreographers, there's drama director, drama producer, they're all listed under clubs. This is item AJ. I want to understand, as much as I am an avid supporter of this program, I want to start by saying that. I am not trying to cut anything, but I do want to understand the cost of, you know, the stipends to run these programs. I know they're also offered as electives, and the revenue that comes in through the shows, I want to understand the budget impact of it. I'm not going to hold back on any approvals today, but my comment is, looking at the agenda item, the number of stipends going towards that one specific thing. I'm able to just assign all of these to the theater and high schools. So maybe I'm wrong, but a conversation in a little bit of detail about this particular department in a future committee meeting would be very helpful to understand, especially as we are going into the budget philosophy discussion. We love our programs.
We could do it in July, we could do it in August, whatever works.
As soon as you can.
And I will also let you know that these are stipends that are part of the MTA contract.
If we, does that mean we cannot touch them?
If it's an MTA contract, it's an MTA contract. So if it says spring play, whatever it might be, that's correct. But we can't, there's nothing wrong with having conversations, so we have an understanding.
Better understanding, right, thank you, I appreciate that.
What's the difference of the detail of this versus that? And I think it would be appropriate, and perhaps I can get with Dr. Lehman, it would be appropriate, and then we could even have Mr. Snyder come forward at a curriculum meeting to give you the details, I agree. But I'm not, it is my understanding, though, that the particular stipends in both the middle school and the high school are listed in the MTA contract.
So I think when I started this conversation, I said they're all listed as clubs, but I don't feel like, some of these are just job responsibilities and not clubs.
Correct, and the way it works is, you know, a club has to be done for free for the first year, right? That's how it's vetted, correct? And then the second year, if it has the, it meets the appropriate needs as per the high school. I don't disagree with you, and perhaps, and that's a conversation I can have with Ms. Zelinski, maybe we separate it out. It's almost like a stipend for builders' club is not the same thing as a club. Help call, I was coming up with something. So I don't disagree with you, but I'm sure it's been here way before Dr. Chanley's been here.
I appreciate, so my comment was.
So maybe we just separate it out, and maybe we still have the conversation.
A future discussion on this is needed, thank you very much.
I can do that, I'll make a little note, and I'll have that conversation.
Are there any other questions, Ms. Ratner?
Yes, first of all, I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Zelinski or Ms. Tagliafiera, whoever put the numbers on the agenda. I appreciate that, and I'm sure it was a lot of time. Just in looking at the same item, AJ, I wanted to know if it might be possible for the abbreviated groups to possibly just have what they are. Like, for example, I know what DECA is, but there might be members of the public who are unaware, or what is FBLA versus FCCLA? So if that is a possibility, I think that would be helpful. You know, there's a few that I'm not sure of as well. And then my question was that I do see there are some clubs where there's two advisors, let's say, and it says 50 percent. Right, for the clubs where there are two advisors without that 50 percent, they each receive the full stipend, is that correct?
So if you have one club, I don't know if you want to answer, but I know the answer, is it answered?
Yes.
Okay.
So the ones, for example, DECA and FBLA have hundreds of students that participate, so they need more than one advisor. The other clubs, the advisors share the role, and it doesn't get to the scope of the size of those clubs.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Are there any other questions? Okay, Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeigner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Under Personnel for a nine-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached Personnel Items AP through CH.
Is there a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Alvarez, second by Ms. DePaine. Are there any questions?
I do have, sorry, I have a comment and a question. The comment is that one of the public comments said that the CHAMP's program curriculum is going to cost us $3,000. I beg to differ, it is $1,534 each full curriculum, I think, the stipend for each curriculum. And I want to get clarification, my understanding is each curriculum is $1,534.
That is correct, and when it says 50 percent, that means the staff members are splitting it, so they would each get half that. If it says 33 percent, that means they're doing one-third of it. The development of the document is a collaborative process, so they're working together to put the documents together, whether it's a group of three or a group of two. They do not work independently. And in most cases, it's the people that are involved in teaching those documents, they're putting them together. And in the case of elementary art grade two, next year, we'll do elementary art grade three. The same three people will share it one-third and do it, so that's, they'll move up the chain or down if they have to do grade one. And that was the discussion that I had with the supervisors, when they look at sharing positions like that. They want everybody to have a voice in the development, and then if they choose to, divide and conquer the writing piece as well.
Thank you for that clarification. So the CHAMP curriculum writing will only cost us $1,534. I had another comment, and Dr. Chanley, I know you replied to this, but I apologize, I only saw that as I was coming in for the meeting, so I did not get a chance to go back and forth with it. There is agenda item BT for approval of summer paraprofessionals. That's $18.60 an hour and not to exceed 120 hours per school. I see that the schools listed are all elementary schools, and I believe your response had something to do with lockers. So that probably is not true, but 120 hours, what do the, so if you just want to touch on that, thank you.
So elementary schools only have one 12-month secretary. Everybody else leaves 10 months. So the work that needs to be done, whether it's organization of materials, supplies, and inventory, is all done by paras at a much less expensive rate because it's per hourly rate. The reason why I put the lockers on there is because at the middle school level, and they may not have done it this year, in the past, because they have a couple, they have two 12-month secretaries, we also had to employ paras because we made a change and we saved, I don't know if it was $100,000 or $50,000, Ms. Allen, you could correct me. We went ahead, and I know a lot of, there was a lot of negativity on Facebook about this, but we stopped saying that we're going to give every teacher K through eight $350 or $375. We started saying, no, we're going to let the principals lead. We're going to let the principals make decisions. They're going to submit to the principals what it is they need, and then we're going to see who else has it. Maybe Ms. Allen, maybe Mr., you know, Mr. Whomever has it, to see if we could share. So when we started doing that, because you don't know what you don't know, you had a little bit of a mess with inventory. So we wanted to need paras for more hours. So the paras in the elementary school, and if they're not on here for approval, then I believe maybe we're not, we used to do paras, at least two paras in the middle school because of receiving. So deliveries, receiving delivery, and then having them delivered to the classrooms, and then renumbering the lockers. So that's why lockers came into play.
Thank you, I appreciate that understanding.
Absolutely.
I also want to ask, there's so many names here, but they're just, we're just approving, maybe we'll use one or two of these.
Correct.
Or none of these.
We approve them just like we do for IEPs. We approve 12 or 15 teachers, and maybe three are utilized. We have to approve them because you make the decisions fiduciarily to say, yes, we can pay you, and if they do the work, they put the sheet in. It gets approved by their immediate supervisor principal, gets approved by Dr. Lehman before anybody gets paid through the checks and balances. That's correct. Good?
I'm good, thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Ratner?
Yes, so my first question for item CF, I believe it is, numbers 23 to 25. There's, it's another large agenda. I see that there's a shift in the elementary school vice principals. Is that due to enrollment shifts, or, okay? Because I see one as a percentage.
They have to be, we were told. So the way it works is, we have to, for purposes of payroll, write a percentage, when all of our VPs are shared. So we are accommodating a VP that we would like to go to other schools. You know, we try very hard, if you live in this district, to not place you in the same school where your children went possible. That's what we do. And we want to go to sister schools, but because Woodland's population is so low, we don't have someone in that sister school, so there winds up being someone. So this time, Brookside will be have, they've always had someone four days, and they will continue to have someone four days. The percentages are exactly the same as they were prior. The difference is the people have been moved.
Okay, so number 23 said change in percentage, it's just because of the movement of them.
Exactly the same, no additional course to the district, and it is managerial prerogative, and it has also been discussed with and welcomed by the individuals.
Okay.
No one's being moved acrimoniously.
The only other, I guess, comment is regarding, I think it was item BK, right? The, I'll just say the CHAMP's curriculum, because it's been discussed.
Agnozium.
I am one of those board members who has said, I love the Avid program, and I wish that all students had it. So I definitely, I can very much appreciate CHAMP's and making it more multidisciplinary, I guess that would be the best way to put it. And I think that it would be great to offer that to all of our students in terms of note-taking, time management, all the things that Avid provides that those students don't get. I did look up just to see like what the foreign language state statutes are, and it does say that they have to have regular sequential instruction, beginning in kindergarten and continuing at least through high school. I'm not by any means a foreign language expert, but I know that our students get foreign, our students get foreign language in elementary school.
To the best we're able to do with the staff that we have.
Right. And knowing that, from what I understood from Dr. Higgins, the Avid students would also not be receiving the foreign language in sixth grade. I don't know how many students that then affects in addition to the LAP program, Advanced Language Arts and Advanced Math.
That's basically Basic Skills Program.
Okay, so I just would be curious if this is possibly maybe something that can continue to be discussed in curriculum as to if there is a way for all of those students who would not be receiving any foreign language in sixth grade to get that while also having the CHAMP's program. I don't even know if that's a possibility.
Well, we could always look at schedule, but I'm going to make a statement as a prior principal of the middle school. Exposure is just that. The true nitty-gritty of the language that comes throughout the high school really starts with consistency in eighth grade. Because in eighth grade, they have an opposite, what happens is in sixth grade or seventh grade, or just seventh grade, or in this case, for a while it was just sixth grade, is only exposure. All of those elements are repeated. I will let you know that our foreign language program in the middle, in the elementary school is the best that we can do with the teachers that we're able to hire. I don't know how else to say it. I will let you know that I feel very strongly that if some of the children, and we can't look at Chorus, by the way, at zero period, although the Chorus parents may not be happy with me after they hear that. But as far as the Avid children are concerned, when something has to give, they are, that is optional, you have to be offered admittance, and then you have to be willing to go. So I feel very strongly that what they're giving up with the Spanish exposure in the sixth grade, they're able to gain through seventh, the eighth grade, is something that they have decided to do. We're not breaking any state rules. Dr. Lehman, make sure that we do everything we're supposed to be doing. And I can't even imagine not going forward with this program because there are, I don't know how many children there are now, there used to be two classes, so let's say there would be 60. I, don't quote me because I don't work there anymore, but it used to be 60 children that rotated through sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, two classes, the Avid classes. But I will let you know that something has to give. Same thing on a Basic Skills Program. Basic Skills Program is supposed to be integrated during the school day. We could turn around and put them on the wheel and put them back into the cycle classes, and then we got to give them after school. So basically, let's punish the child and make them stay after school when they want to do activities, they might have CCD, they might have Everschool, they are, you know, they do rec, baseball, and now we make them stay after school because they need extra learning. So my statement is, something's got to give. So at this time, I don't see how we can make it work in that regards, with the exception of Chorus. Maybe make a zero-period Chorus again. So, and I don't see any other way that that would work.
Mr. DePaine?
I have a question, and it might have been brought up, and it might, I mean, I watched a curriculum meeting, and I watched it twice because of this CHAMP's issue. I just want to know, with regards to that and the Avid, you have your special needs kids that we take, children that we take care of, and our GT children, which, after all the awards... all the award ceremonies I've been to, we have quite a bit here in this township, do these programs hit the children that are middle of the road and are not here and there? Because I had one child that was always, and then I had two that were like, you know, B C students.
Right.
And we always complained on the board that, nobody worries about them because they're good kids.
It's actually the opposite here.
Well, I'm saying, it, well, my children were good kids.
Right, no, but I mean, I mean, yeah. So, so to answer your question here, the way the Avid program works, if you are talented and gifted, which now we do within the school day since I came here, which is the proper way to do it, because now we have these extended programs, both English and math, children that are in the talented and gifted, let's say accelerated math, accelerated language arts literacy, and are special education children, who are equally as bright, but they're in a specialized program, cannot have any of the advantages of the Avid program.
Okay.
Wicker, CHAMP's does that for them.
Okay, I just wanted to, I just wanted to.
So now, now we're able. Listen, now we're able to look and say, all of the, it's about strategies and best practices, I don't care what you call it. You know, if we would've done it, we'd all be rich. Someone came along and created these programs, they took best practices. Now we have an opportunity, sixth grade is such a tough year for children. They go from being babies, they're still kind of babies, to trying, being mature, and this is something I do know about, because I've been in middle school, and I understand the pedagogy and the philosophy forever, giving them an opportunity where every child will have all of these strategies of knowing how to organize, you know, knowing all the things, and I don't want to repeat myself ad nauseam because I seem to be doing that, but I really feel very passionate that we finally have an opportunity to bring the strategies that we give to our Avid children to everybody's child.
Okay, that's, that's what I just wanted to just, you know, make sure that.
Yes.
That's what I, that's what I was understanding, because there's been a lot.
And you were understanding it correctly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if I may comment on that, Ms. Fabiano? So, as a parent of three children in the district, none of my kids got the Avid opportunity, and I really wanted them to get it, because the, the discipline that comes from that program, from whatever I've seen, you know, children that I know in the community, in the, in the school district that have gone through the program, and the skills they've developed, I feel like every child can benefit from it. And that's why one of my concerns during the approvals for just Woodland having Avid and none of our other, we don't have the money to start this anywhere else, but there is disparity in the district. There is only few children in middle school and in high school who get the benefit of this program, and the criteria is, is, and, and what it teaches, the strategies it teaches can benefit every student, e- even, you know, high-performing students, low performing. So I feel like, from everything else that's come out of this CHAMP's program, the biggest thing that's come out of it is that we will be awarding that opportunity to every sixth grader, and if, as a parent, I have to evaluate everything that my child is learning, and see, see what is it that's going to push the child furthest, I feel like this is a positive change. We need to give this administration the opportunity to try it. Doesn't work, if we are lagging somewhere, we can go back. But let's try to support this. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes to all, no to B K seventeen eighteen.
Ms. Bora?
Yes to all.
Ms. DePain?
Yes to all.
Mr. Pirro?
Yes to all, except B K seventeen eighteen, no.
Uh, Ms. Ratner?
Uh, yes to all, recuse on item B M, number fifteen.
Uh, Ms. Sharma?
Uh, yes to all, but no to B K seventeen and eighteen.
Uh, Mr. Zeigner?
I'm gonna, uh, all, I'm fine with all except seventeen and eighteen, B K seventeen eighteen, but I will abstain on seventeen and eighteen. Let's see what they come up with.
He abstained.
Yeah.
Um, Ms. Fabiano?
Yes to all.
Okay, so we have, uh, so motion passes, um, I think we had, twenty-five. Except for B K. Right? We have eight.
He abstained.
He abstained.
So you have three no's.
Right.
And.
Three.
Five, you have five yes.
So it should be.
But this was the abstain.
Okay.
Doesn't abstain count, oh, sorry.
So we had, um.
Go ahead, read it out.
Okay, we had one, two, three no's, and one abstain, so, motion passes except for the B K seventeen eighteen.
Does the abstention count as a no vote?
Three no's and one abstain.
If it's a personnel action, abstention doesn't count at all, ever.
Ever, okay.
But if it's a personnel action, it's a nine-person vote you had, right?
Yes.
So you need five affirmative votes. Do you have five affirmative votes?
You're missing one member today, though.
No, we're missing a member, yeah.
So when they vote.
Ms. Tafano's absent.
Ms. Tafano's absent.
Uh, does, do you have, did you have five affirmative votes? Doesn't matter if someone's absent.
Four yeses.
We have four yeses.
If it's a personnel action on a nine-person vote, you need five affirmative votes in order for it to pass.
So the abstain does not matter? The count has to be five?
You need five yeses.
We don't have five yeses.
Abstention is, is like a non-vote, you need five affirmative votes.
Okay, so it didn't pass?
Right.
I think, Mr. Zeigner has a question.
No, then, in other words, it does not pass, is that what you're saying? Okay, and I will, can I change my vote on it?
No.
My vote would be yes.
Discretion of the president.
Yeah.
My vote then would be yes.
Oh, okay, Mr. Zeigner.
Can I comment on that? Am I allowed to comment?
I'm not running the meeting, you guys.
Oh, am I allowed to comment?
Sure.
I want to thank Mr. Zeigner, and I just want to make a statement, and I truly mean this, this particular class is not about Dr. Chanley. If I am not, if you are not for me, that's, I respect anybody's decisions, and I respect everybody's decisions that felt perhaps it wasn't vet enough, but I'm gonna make this statement. I want to thank the board members that did vote yes, and I've never spoken this way before in the three, three years almost, two and three-quarter years. This is what is best for all of our children. It's an opportunity to get fantastic skills as they enter the most difficult year of their life. It's not ninth grade, it's not college, it's not even kindergarten, it's sixth grade. So I do want to say thank you to the board members, and for the board members, and I respect, always respect your vote. Your vote is your voice. To the board members that felt compelled to vote no, and I respect you, I respect your vote, but I, I ask, moving forward, if you ever have any more questions in the future, it would be my pleasure to explain, because I truly sit up here, making the recommendations I do, truly for the kids. It, it doesn't affect me one way or another, so I thank you, Mr. Zeigner, for making that change. I'm very excited about this class. I just wanted, I just wanted a comment, thank you.
Okay, uh, next item.
Yes, I have to continue, I got lost, I'm on my sidetrack here, I apologize. So under board action, ten-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached board action items A through X.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Uh, motion by Ms. Bora, second by Ms. DePain. Are there any questions? Ms. Ratner?
I just wanted to confirm about Study Islands. Um, it's under admin, ten, I just, I did not see it under the ten-member vote, is it just under business administrators' recommendation instead?
It's right here, it's here, it's, I see it under the, I see it in the list of file attachments.
Right, it's under file attachments, it's not listed as an agenda item. That was my question. That's actually why the question came to, to mind.
It's V.
Ah, okay, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you very much, Dr. Lehman.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeigner?
Um, hold on.
I jumped the gun, I'm sorry.
I'll be Ms. Ratner.
Yes.
Now call Ms. Ratner.
Okay, so, um, yes to all, recuse on item letter A for Mr. Snyder and for Dr. Chanley.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
Under a nine-member vote for board action, it is recommended that the board approve the attached board action items Y through A D.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bora, second by Ms. Alvarez. Are there any questions? Okay, can we have a roll call?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Mr. Pirro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeigner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So I just want to reiterate wishing our 2024 seniors a fabulous flight as they move forward, um, and I'd like to wish everyone in the community, for those that are here and those that are watching, a wonderful summer. Of course, we will be here conducting business, but many of you will not. I wish you all safe vacations, and I want to thank this new Board of Education for working with me for what is best for the Monroe Township students. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Chanley. The next item on our agenda is the Business Administrators Report. Ms. Allen?
Yes, um, for, um, for a ten-member vote, um, it is recommended that board action items A through V be approved by consent, roll call.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ratner, second by Ms. DePain. Are there any questions?
I have a comment, um, item eight thirteen, which is the contract for the Bush Law Group, this was submitted this afternoon, um, I will be abstaining because of lack of time to deliberate on this. I understand that this is a very cost-effective contract. I do not have anything per se against the provider, and so I'm gonna abstain, I am going to abstain due to lack of time to deliberate, um, as a committee and as an individual board member. That's my comment, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bora, are there any other questions?
Madam President, just a point of order, I believe if you look at the agenda, items thirteen and thirty-six are identical.
Thirteen. So. And thirty-six. So, thirteen.
Oh, yes, they are.
Nope, thirteen is for July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, and thirty-six is through June 12th, 2024 through June 30th, 2024.
I see.
Now, I, I know that we have to make a, we spoke about this, about making the amendment, or if somebody wanted to make the amendment, to continue the services with regards to anything that's still pending.
Sure, um, do you want me to repeat?
Yes, please.
So, um, the, about an hour or so before the board meeting, I spoke with the board president, and she told me about this, obviously I had no idea that this was afoot, and so, um, I pointed out that, uh, change in, in board council is one thing, there are, and the board is aware of this, two pending Superior Court actions, and three administrative actions that are pending, and, um, I wanted the board to clarify, for my sake and the sake of any successor, uh, that we would be able to continue as council in the existing actions. Um, with the Superior Court actions, we would need to make an application to the court anyway, so it's not necessarily in all of our control, but, um, I thought it was important, since the board isn't meeting again before our current contract expires, that the board clarified that this evening.
So that would have to be, we said somebody would have to make an amendment to agree to continuity of services on the current pending?
That doesn't, uh, apply to the, the pending actions.
So, okay, so we would make, follow through with the motion, vote on that, and then somebody would?
No, my, my respectful suggestion, as with any motion, is before the motion is voted on, there'd be, again, the board needs to clarify this one way or the other, right? So, that there be a, a motion to amend made to clarify our ability to continue in the existing actions.
Okay.
I'll make that motion. To, to amend it, to continue the existing actions, uh, to completion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Until you vote on the amendment.
Okay.
And then you can vote on the.
Okay. Ms. Ratner, do you have a question about the amendment?
I do. I just wanted to confirm with Ms. Allen that, just because this wasn't on the agenda, but it is falling under the Business Administrators', uh, recommendation, um, that this is, um, what should move forward. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a roll call on the amendment, please.
Yes. Um, Ms. Alvarez?
We're voting on the.
On the amendment.
Not the main motion, right?
Nope.
Right, just on the amendment.
Yes.
Procedurally, you're just voting on the amendment, to amend thirteen and thirty-six to clarify that we would continue in the exist, with the existing actions.
If thirteen and thirty-six would pass?
Yes.
Okay, are we, are we, okay.
Is it my turn?
No.
You're voting on the amendment, right?
Just on the amendment.
The amendment.
So, yes, Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Pirro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeigner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. And then, um.
Now it's a roll call for the original motion.
So, um, Ms. Alvarez?
You ready for this? Okay, so, yes to all, but I have to recuse on number sixteen for the Learning Tree, the bill list for the Learning Tree, and letter V, uh, for the Learning Tree again,[1582.68] list for the Learning Tree, and letter V for the Learning Tree again. Anything related to Learning Tree.
Yep, okay.
Ms. Bora? Yes to all, but abstain on 13 and 36.
Okay. Ms. DePaine?
Yes to all.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes to all.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes to all, recuse on the bill list for 63197, and for the bill list addendum for 63689, and then recuse on item letter R for Dr. Chanley, and recuse on letter V for Mr. Rubin and the Florio Law Office.
Oh, excuse me. I was just told that I'm supposed to recuse on letter R. By our esteemed, my esteemed colleague, Ms. Ratner.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes to all.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes to all.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes to all, recuse on the Florio firm.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, so, it is recommended, under a nine-member vote, that board action items W through Z be approved by consent. Roll call.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Alvarez, second by Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Are there any questions? Ms. Ratner?
Just a quick thank you for the donations that are listed here, from the Monroe Township Education Association, for the donations towards empty bowls, letter X, and then letter Y, also from the MTA, for the elementary kindergarten, T.
Okay, Ms. Allen?
Okay, so, Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I'm going to keep my board president's report short and sweet. I hope, welcome to our new venue. I'd like to thank our administration and the staff for setting this up. It's a work in progress. I'm just trying to figure out how to see everybody still, but I feel like that this is a great space for us to be in, so thank you for the recommendation. I also want to congratulate all of our honorees this evening. Tonight was a beautiful tribute to our staff and students honoring their hard work and achievements. To our retirees, I wish you nothing but the best. I hope you enjoy your time with your friends and loved ones, doing things that make your heart happy. To our students, keep working to your potential. As I always tell my children and my students, as long as you try your best, no one can ask for anything more, so keep up the good work. As we wrap up the school year, I want to thank our administration, faculty, staff, and students for another successful year. The district will be offering a plethora of programs this summer, so I hope that you will participate in as many of them as possible. And lastly, congratulations to our class of 2024. I hope that everybody enjoys the summer, and while we certainly don't want to rush it, we are looking forward to welcoming you all back in September. So, that concludes my report. So, the next item on the agenda is other board business. Ms. DePaine, you already have your hand up.
Yes. I just wanted to thank personally Nancy Tagliaferro, who is sitting over there, and Rashima Zalinski, for the great work they do in organizing us. I mean, we can text them anything, call them at any time, and within a half hour, it's on the agenda, or if I have a meeting, they've changed it. And I want to thank them for their expertise and for being such conscientious workers for this Board of Education. Couldn't ask for two better, I don't know what their title is, if they're secretary, they should be administrative assistants or administrative managers, and give them a raise. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Ms. Ratner?
Um, yes. So, I'll try to keep it short, I promise.
Try, Ms. Ratner.
Maybe start the timer. You have four minutes.
Push that timer now.
So I was, I'm like looking at it now to see if it starts moving. Okay. I was happy to attend lots of events over the last month. It's a great time of the year. I wanted to thank Dr. Chanley for inviting me to attend the liaison meeting. I had the pleasure of attending in May, as well as this afternoon. It's really great to hear those students speak. They have some really good ideas, and there's some good conversation. Ms. Fabiano had also attended with me at the meeting in May. It was definitely enjoyable. Some other just quick highlights. My seven-year-old son came with me to attend the high school carnival, and he really enjoyed that, as did I, especially, he really liked the cotton candy, so thanks for that. The games, and then the dunk tank, although I did feel bad because he ran up to the button and pushed the guy down into the dunk tank automatically, so I am sorry, Mr. Rock the Shelf, for that. I got to attend a few of the music concerts in the district. I will say, my favorite piece was a choral piece by the seventh and eighth grade that sort of showcased the impact of social media and technology. They had actually, it was in this auditorium. They had dimmed the lights, and the students had their cellphones out, and it was really cool to see how they used that as a prop to really showcase what they were singing about. So I definitely enjoyed that. I wish I remembered the name of the piece. The Armed Forces event was also wonderful, seeing our veterans honored, as well as the senior award nights. Congratulations to all the seniors who received the awards, and thank you to members of the community who partnered with the school district to honor the kids. I did just want to send a quick thank you to Mr. Gagliardi for sharing some of his advice over the past few years. I will always remember your statement of there being no place like Monroe. It rings in my ears often, so thank you for that. And while I certainly try not to repeat items, I do want to congratulate all of our graduates. I am attending a pre-K graduation for my littlest guy next week, so that's exciting. He'll be at Millik for Kindergarten. But I know while the high school graduation is the culminating event, it is really exciting to see our students moving up from the elementary school to the middle school to the high school. And so thank you to everyone who puts the time in to make those ceremonies really great for our students, and have a great summer.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Ms. Bora?
Thank you. I want to start by congratulating the retirees and the student honorees tonight. Some of these retirees I've worked with since my kids were little, or PTA days, so it seems like coming full circle. I have a graduated student, a rising senior, and these people are retiring, so life is coming full circle. I want to take a minute to talk about cricket. I don't know how many of you are following the news. Team USA played Team India today in a stadium in Nassau County, Long Island, and it just made me think back to two years ago when we became the first, you know, first high school in New Jersey to approve a team. And I think it's commendable, given that Team USA is doing so well. We have opened the doors of opportunity for our students, so just a good pat on the back to this administration for, to Abir Khan, the student who actually pushed for it two years ago, for allowing Monroe to be on the map for something like that. I do also want to comment on the changes happening, change to, the change of venue to here, the change of no more paper agendas in the mail on Friday. I think a lot of us struggled this week. It was a big struggle for me because I typically multitask agenda review on sidelines of my kids' games while they're warming up, and this time I couldn't because there were, I couldn't, I needed internet connection. So, it was a struggle, but I feel good today for the lack of paperwork stage that we have accomplished as a board in one meeting, and it'll only multiply over the coming months and years. So, I do want to commend the administration on both those changes. It's good changes. And then I want to take a minute to address the comments from Mr. Fabiano about the whole budget. And not knowing what we are doing, I, I hope you would give the board a little bit more credit for the time and effort and thought we are putting into this. We are, there is a thought process behind it. I think each one of us goes through the agenda looking for opportunities to cut overspending. We do do that. We've been doing that. I've been doing that for two years. I can speak for myself, and I know everybody else is doing that. But as Ms. Chanley said, you cannot get big impacts from those little cuts. We do need to get judicious in our spending and more efficient, but the conversations on budget and the question, and whether or not we need to go back out to a question, there is a due process around it, and we as a board, with the community's trust, are taking it. It's not one person, it's not two people. The 10 of us would like information that the administration is working towards. My North Star is student success, as is for a lot of us board members, and we are also answerable to the community, not just as public fiduciaries, but as people responsible for student success in this town. So when the conversation around budget cuts revolves around staff cuts, it cannot be straight out of the gate, no, we are not going out of a public question. No. The public is involved, they're stakeholders, and maybe at that point of time, when it's going to impact education significantly, we should be open to taking it back out to the public. And the public will say no. And then we would have done our part as board members for having taken the information to make the decision. So, I just wanted to answer that, that, you know, I am not biased one way or the other. As soon as the new vote came in place, I questioned, when are we going to move the election dates? I am very cognizant of the fact that an additional election in April costs $100,000. But my North Star is still student success. I am answerable to a community that is in Monroe for the quality of education. And if anything is going to impact that quality of education, that's going to be my first consideration, not going back out to the taxpayers to ask for more money, because we are not in the same state as other districts. Other districts have always had more funding than us. Monroe is coming from a place of no funding, and we are still in the same board as other districts with inflation and, you know, all the other costs that are coming at us. So, I'm sorry, we do have a lot more to consider than just asking taxpayers for more money. That is one of the considerations, yes, but there are more considerations. So I just wanted to answer that and conclude with the, with a little, with my two cents to the board about due process. I know I've spoken about it enough today. As a board, we are all trained to not overstep, but to do our due diligence. We have to deliberate on things before we vote. And I was taken aback by the quick action on the board attorney today. Yes, the administration needs to recommend, but the board, and I've heard Ms. Arminio complain about this, a lot of times when she would come back, come straight from work and say, I barely had a time to look at what's sent at four o'clock, and I'm being asked to vote about it. Well, you know, most of the times I don't complain about it. Most of the times, I will also look at the agenda before I am, like, my email before I step out of the house to see if there's something that's changed and if I need to think about. This was big. This was big and should not have been rushed. And I am stating my personal opinion, based on the training that I've had, that one board member might feel, this is the best choice. I know I've done the research. But all, all of us need to be able to deliberate, discuss this. There were aspects to the attorney contract that were not discussed at all with the board. What are the miscellaneous charges? There was attachment that talked about miscellaneous charges, but I don't know what they're going to cost. I know there's going to be some cost savings, but I would like to do a little bit more research on the attorneys that come with the practice and ask, who are the attorneys that are going to be present in my board meeting? We've had two years of learning with Porseo. There's key takeaways that we have, that we could use towards those deliberations. So, I felt like rushing into a decision in a matter of hours for something this big was the board not doing its due diligence. I respect all the board members and their votes, but I did want to say this out publicly, that I hope we will not make a habit of this. I hope going forward, we will take our time, even if it's cost us a few hundred dollars more. We owe the public the due diligence, the public transparency of discussions. None of this was discussed in a public committee meeting, and that is another one of my holdbacks with what happened tonight. But respectfully, I just needed to say it out so that all my board members, fellow board members, know what I feel, because I do not want this repeated. It has happened tonight, it has passed, and all will be well. We will save money, but we should not make this a practice. And to the administration, I respect your recommendations. I'm not questioning it. I just, I'm asking to be allowed, as a board member, for critical wants, to be given the time to deliberate. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
Madam President, may I?
Yes.
So, obviously, given the second part of the motion, which I wasn't made aware of and didn't realize, the change in the dates, outside of those cases where we will continue, I won't be hanging out with you once a month. Somewhere between four and five years ago, I got a phone call. My only previous involvement with this board was representing a board member on an ethics matter many years ago. And I was told that we had been named interim board attorneys, because your in-house attorney had resigned somewhat suddenly, and they needed outside counsel. So, I did not solicit this interim position and did not know I was under consideration, much like I didn't know I was under consideration to be in the position I'm in right now. So, what does it mean to be an interim board attorney in Monroe? Well, in Monroe, an interim board attorney means that the only person who was sitting up here when I got here was Adam Herman. Everyone else has been here less time than me, and that was in an interim role. It was very clear to me, having done this for a long time, the difficulty the board had in working collaboratively. And I thought to myself, if any of you watch those medical shows where the young interns get excited because somebody comes in mangled in an accident, and they're really excited to see what's going to go on here. It was a privilege for me to try to help the board deal with challenges, many of which I say respectfully were of its own making. I don't know how many in this people, people in this community can say they got along very well with Steve Ryback, Michelle Arminio, Chrissy Skirby, and Katie Fabiano, but I did. These are people who all had maybe different views of what they could do, but they were all sincerely interested in advancing the interests of this school district. And so, the opportunity I had to help them and their fellow board members and the dedicated administration here to serve the children of this community was never dull, and was always my professional privilege. I was seven years old, living in Middlesex County, when I decided I wanted to be an attorney. I decided I wanted to be an attorney because it seemed like, I'm reading about all these interesting people, Abraham Lincoln, Robert F. Kennedy, they're all lawyers. I'm like, well, this seems pretty cool. It is, actually. And so, I wanted to thank the board for the opportunity to serve you, and in a different capacity, the opportunity to continue to serve you, and certainly to the public as well, which pays these fees. I'm not sure that you're necessarily going to get cheaper service, whoever you use, however you use them, because I have the privilege of working with a talented team. And so when I get a tough question, I can call or go down the hall and talk to a former commissioner of education, or a former assistant commissioner of education, or any one of four retired judges. So I'm blessed to work with very talented, very interesting people who have the chance to make me look good from time to time, but mostly to give me the chance to serve, and I thank you for the opportunity to do exactly that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gagliardi. We truly do appreciate all of the work and your support over these last few years, so thank you very much. If there's no other board members wishing to speak, Ms. Ratner?
I just wanted to thank the Apple Gar Elementary School for these really adorable bags that were on our table when we came into the board meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is, there is no closed session resolution needed, so the next, the next item on the agenda, oh, public forum, sorry, published forum. I missed skipping down the agenda. Public forum, any members of the public wishing to speak, you have four minutes to do so. Please come up to either microphone, state your name and municipality.
Excuse me, Bob Valentine, Monroe Township. I just wanted to speak briefly, because I should explain, I've been in town for about 20 years. I'm retired financial executive. I've worked at Naff and Proud for 40 years in finance, including times as CFO. And considering all the recent discussions, a lot of topics have been there over the last few months, financial transparency, financial literacy, civics. And I just felt like, you know, my observations the last few months, it seemed like an appropriate time to maybe just spend a minute or so very quickly and just share some observations. And it's really about a similar event that played out very differently in two facilities about a half mile apart in this town, and that was the budget process. I wanted to talk about it a little bit, not to try to argue for somebody's point of view or some group's point of view, but just for a point of view, the one thing most of us in this room will have in common is we're all residents. So everything goes on in all these different forms that impacts all of us one way or the other. And I want, and I want, I think it's important always for all of us to try to keep a balanced perspective in how we look at everything, and make sure that we all try to hold everybody equally accountable. And what I noted in going through both processes, really for the first time in depth, I'll start with the school district. You know, as they're required to, and I understand its requirement, but a public meeting was held to introduce the budget. The budget was shared in advance of the year, it was four. Supporting financial information and other information was shared. The residents who attended were told why a tax increase was needed, what the use of the additional tax dollars was going to be, and what would happen if a tax increase was voted down. The board took questions, they heard voices of support and voices of criticism. And the district has a finance committee that meets regularly. I'd just like to contrast that with what happened in the town with the municipal budget. It was introduced as an agenda item at the regular monthly board meeting without any commentary. It was for the 2024 budget year, which began back in January. It was posted on the town website with no message or presentation as to what the impact of the budget would be, how the budget was developed, whether taxes would be raised or lowered, or how the town's performing financially. The budget document they're required to fill out is about 80 pages long, and they're required to fill out in a format that's really designed for use by the state, not for use by the residents to understand the budget. And that's why I think the absence of any commentary or context around the budget is such an important thing not to have. There was no public hearing or information session held to explain the budget, and the public was aware that was out there, they could call and ask questions, and I did call and ask, I did have a session to ask questions, so, and they were very cordial and accommodating. But then the meeting agenda and the final budget for the town council meeting, which the budget was to be approved and posted, was posted two days in advance, Monday morning for the Wednesday night meeting. That's what was put out on the website if you wanted to attend. And of course, you know, there was not a big attendance, and there's very little feedback or commentary from the public on the budget. The tax increase resulting from the budget was widely communicated only after the budget was approved, when the residents had little of any recourse. Last year, the message went out before the budget was approved. I would note, there was no tax increase proposed last year. The town has operated in this fashion for years. It's not new. It occurs because we all collectively have allowed it to go on as we've had other priorities, and the town's processes really structured to discourage attention to the budget. The actual, the cumulative rate of increase in our school and municipal taxes for over the last 10 years, they actually track pretty closely. In fact, if you, I don't know, I guess a pack rest, like, I have every taxes that's been called, I've gotten in 20 years I've been here. And if you tell, if you, if anybody, anybody like they pull it out, you'll see that they track, they track pretty closely the rates of increase. Oh, by the way, the county tax has gone up 41%. I wanted to share this with all of you, because one of the largest expenses our young people are going to face in their lifetime is property taxes, whether they rent or own their residence. And if they, they should understand how their taxes are determined, and who can understand how to read a budget and a budget message, with equal focus on what was shared, and really more importantly, what was not shared, critical thinking. So I think, you know, I think this all kind of ties into all the themes that have been So I think, you know, I think this all kind of ties into all the themes that have been percolating over the last few months. I wanted to share it with you. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we will, we will be as transparent as possible with our discussions that'll be occurring in our finance meeting and at our general meetings, so we will put forth as much information as we can to...
If I can, I would suggest try look three years. I know it's more work, you really want to have a longer view.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Sarah Zeisman, our township. Earlier, Superintendent Chanley admitted teachers would be cut if the board didn't approve the CHAMPs program. Just, I'm surprised what basis on, would these teachers be cut if the district just got more money in a referendum? Dr. Lehman said that he was already planning this type of course earlier in October, so I'm surprised we didn't know earlier that there would be five positions that could be on the chopping block. I hope this board evaluates this program more carefully after the curriculum is created to make sure it is an evidence-based, there is evidence-based data to justify it. I would also like to ask the superintendent, which other schools offer the CHAMPs course as part of their sixth grade curriculum?
Would you like to answer that? Or do, the time is going to keep running?
What other districts offer this program?
Do you have any other, hold on, do you have any other questions before we answer? Okay.
As I'm going to repeat ad nauseam, and I apologize for the community that needs to hear me over and over again, I did not say that other districts use CHAMPs. I said, one major part of the CHAMPs class is the WICOR strategies that has been vetted and part, and I apologize. I want, I want to thank Applegarth for giving us Swedish fish because fish is their, fish is their acronym, and I'm eating the fish. I'm sorry. I didn't realize I'd be talking about CHAMPs again. I'm going to be dreaming about CHAMPs. The WICOR strategies are exceptional, best practices that exist nationwide. CHAMPs is just a very good program that incorporates many best practices. And how about Monroe leads the charge with something new instead of worrying about what's being gone on in all the other districts around us? Because we're better. Excuse me, I'm choking.
Not on a fish.
On a fish. Because we're better. We're better. How about we become the innovators, not the emulators? Thank you.
Are there any, do you need water?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Are there any other members, oh, Miss, hold on, Mr. Zeigner, we're in public forum, so just wait one minute. Okay. Go ahead, you can come up.
As I'm choking. Sorry.
Good evening. Is this good up here?
We can hear you.
Okay. Good evening. Sorry, I'm dressed like this. Next time I call a problem, I'll try to be dressed more appropriately for these meetings. But I was listening to a meeting on my way here, and I have to say, less than one month ago, Katie Fabiano, you stated, and I quote, "I have expressed that I do not feel, given our financial situation, that we should be hiring at the top of the salary guide. I'm sure that your wife is phenomenal, has nothing to do with your wife. Your wife, I'm sure, is amazing. She's going to do wonderful. I just do not feel that we should be hiring at the top of the salary guide," end quote. When I pressed you further about singling out my wife, you repeated, quote, "I do not feel that we should be hiring any further at the top of the salary guide," end quote. These are direct quotes from a recorded May meeting, which I have queued up, and I'm more than happy to play for your memory if needed. It is also important to note that we still have not received any rice notifications that my wife is going to be discussed. Four no votes and no rice notification, that seems very odd. You openly called my wife by name and then proceeded to discuss her, your opinion of her, and why you decided to vote no. Anytime you're going to discuss an employee, they need to be rice. You are not even allowed to discuss personnel information at all in public, so you actually failed to follow the law. Tonight, you vote yes at the top of the salary guide. Thankfully and interestingly, there was no social media bashing, no slander, no rabble-rousing prior to tonight's meeting. As of tonight, the current total number of non-tenured teachers that you voted yes to hire over the course of the last 30 days at step 10 or above is now at 23. 23 out of 24, all yes from you. All yes except for one highly qualified teacher with a master's plus 30 and 19 years of experience. Please explain to the public how on May 13th, just 30 days ago, you're on record saying you will not support hiring at the top of the guide, given the financial situation, but here you are today on June 12th, doing the exact same thing you claimed was your reason for voting no and singling out one teacher by name last meeting. You continue to tell the public that the district is in a financial crisis. Has the financial situation changed? I ask because at the finance meeting, it sounded like Mr. Piero said he supports making cuts next year to stay under the 2% cap. So what is actually going on here? It is blatantly clear you have a personal vendetta. The unfortunate reality is that you openly singled out an educator and community member twice, once in April and again in May, and you used her as a pawn in whatever toxic political game you were playing. Your behavior and your actions are unethical and unlawful, proven further by the way in which you voted this evening. As the spouse of someone on the receiving end of this deplorable behavior, I'm beyond horrified. As the parent of three children in this community, I'm truly disheartened. I, for one, am looking forward to returning next month and every month that follows in order to shed more light on this astounding level of hypocrisy. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to say that we have, we, I have talked with administration. I'm not going to be speaking about any individual, but we have had discussions regarding salaries and hiring guides and our financial situation, and I will leave it at that. Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
I still had a minute on there. Can I speak? There was still a minute on there.
We didn't stop the clock. The clock is, the clock is supposed to be running when you're up here.
Okay. I saw a minute and seven when I, when I came back up, so, all right.
Brian Fabiano, 19 Patricia Place. The antics will continue, that's all I'll say. I hope they come back every month. My question was for Dr. Chanley, and it's not on the agenda. I was just thinking about this the other day, seeing everything that's going on in the news. What plans do we have in place here in Monroe to not ever have a situation like East Brunswick is going through right now? Obviously, you see a lot of what's going on in terms of, like, the yearbook. Yeah, I'm just wondering what we have here in the district so that we never, never get into a situation like East Brunswick. And unfortunate, we obviously don't know the result of that investigation, but that's their problem, thankfully not ours. But I hope we have a plan in place. I'd like to just hear, and maybe you're working on, on something. So I'll let you answer that, but one thing, correct, this is going in and out, Ms. Bora on, the words, this board doesn't know what they're doing, never come out of my mouth tonight. So I encourage you to go back and watch the video, and don't power phrase me if you're not going to use the correct words. What I said is, this board should know what they're doing when they go out to a budget and should be able to know what those amounts are allotted to. That doesn't mean that you don't know what you're doing, and it was answered, obviously, very clearly that there, there is somewhat, you know, a, a plan with that money, there's just a question around whether some things can be changed. My only comment there would be, when you went out to budget, if there was a concern about very specific roles, you know, a special education teacher or the couple, I don't have the list here, you should have kept the, the monies for that amount over 2% more broad so that you had more flexibility. So in some sense, unless I'm understanding it wrong, you pigeonholed us a little bit by doing those specific niche roles, if you will, rather than maybe more general education. But again, it is what it is, but I think that's what's important when you, when you go over the budget as you're moving forward. And again, my comments were that this board needs to approach it differently, not about how we get the, the voters to, again, pass over the budget and spend more money. It should be, how can we not go over the budget? Because that, that isn't customary. If you go back and look, this is the first time we did it in 10 years. So that, that was my comment. So if I'm going to be paraphrased, let's get it right. But I'm interested to hear how we, you know, what plans we may have to not have a, a problem like East Brunswick. Thank you.
Excuse me. Please pardon me. You see what happens when you, you take a treat that someone gives you? Never do that again. Until the investigation heeds, whether it was infiltration of their technology, we do have checks and balances, not to say that we don't make mistakes, because we do make mistakes. There's been mistakes at the yearbooks in the middle school, there's been mistakes at the high school. I'm happy to say, although it is devastating when a child's picture is left out, which does happen and has happened, the situation that happened in East Brunswick, I can't really speak on because I don't know yet, and I actually just went to a meeting with all the superintendents, including Dr. Valeski, I don't know what their, what their investigation is going to heed. I will tell you that I am extremely proud that we have exceptional safeguards, since Mr. Feldman has come on board. Prior to him, Mr. Washington did an exceptional job, but we have, since our, I don't know if the cyber attack, what was the verbiage? It was an attack. What's that called? Cyber attack? But there was an actual word, I forgot what it was called.
Ransomware attack.
Ransomware. We have exceptional checks and balances. I will never say that, that something can't happen, but I think a once-over, like, a simple plan, human, can't use AI, can't use grammar, can't use, right? A human person sitting and going through the end result, and it is electronic, page by page, and looking at every single thing before it goes to print, is the best plan that I could think of, truly. Just a human being, the advisor, or whoever it might be, just really doing that. My only concern is, and like I said, I won't speak for East Brunswick because I don't know the particulars, I try and stay off any form of social media, and I really don't even watch that news, I only watch certain types of news, and I don't know what's going on in that regard. But if, let's say they did, that was very lovely of you, thank you, I really appreciate that. If they say at the end, and I don't know the answer, maybe someone in the public does, that after everything was checked appropriately and correctly and done, that someone went in through technology and removed the picture and then, you know, played with the names, then I would say I don't know how we would combat that. It would be my hope that once it goes to print, once you press that button of submit after we have a human person check it, I, I would be hopeful that that wouldn't happen. I think it's a very sad situation, regardless of what your cultural background or your religious background is, everybody should be depicted, and I mean this on social media as well, everybody should be depicted accurately. And unfortunately, that was a very sad situation.
My question was just the review process.
Well, the, right now, they have a review process, absolutely. But I do think that perhaps they're going to need to have another, like, you're going to have to have, like, we talk about checks and balances, when we pay back tuitions, that was one of the questions. I'm always thinking I'm going to have to have a conversation with Dr. Higgins that maybe we're going to have to have somebody sit there after it's already reviewed and go page by page by page. I don't know who else to do it. I'm curious to see, though, with your investigation heeds. I haven't heard anything. I don't know.
No, it hasn't. Their...
Has it been released? Our yearbook is...
Have we gotten it?
So, you want me to pick up?
Yes, thank you.
So our current checks and balance process, outside of the student photos piece, the student portrait piece, so candid's, club photos, things like that, the building principal, the senior vice principal, the vice principal of the seniors, then the yearbook advisors do manual reviews of each of that, and they do identify photos and, and require a switch out of the photos. That's something we have in place to prevent a case like what we know about East Brunswick to happen. Then it's submitted, student portraits are then transmitted from the photographer directly to populate any vacant student photo spaces. That's where you would see all the student pictures. So our checks and balances right now is tight when it comes to candid photos or club photos. What our next step now is, is to verify that the transmission process of student photos is, and those are portraits, right? So the photos themselves are most likely fine, but to verify that the photos of students who should be in the yearbook are actually in the yearbook, and if there's an absent photo to verify that it's by choice, not by accident. So that's where our improvement can occur as opposed to the candid piece or the stock photos that come through a yearbook sometimes and things like that. So there's two pieces of our checks and balances.
Now we need a third.
And that's, and that's where we're at, and they do, they manually go through and look, or digitally go through on the, on the photo yearbook website.
Anybody else wishing to speak?
Just...
Hold on, Mr. Zeigner, we still have public forum.
Yeah, thank you.
Nope, public forum's still going, so just wait one minute.
Oh, okay, sorry. I thought we were done. My fault.
That's okay. Chrissy Skirby, Monroe Township. I have to say, I'm really shocked with what I saw here tonight. I watched the finance meeting, and I read the agenda when it was issued. To hear that this board blindsided the attorney and took it out of the direction of the finance committee, the finance committee asked Ms. Allen to post an RFP for law firms and to bring it back to the committee to have a discussion. The fact that it was put on an agenda at the last minute, board attorney said he didn't know about it, it is really shocking that there was no discussion here this evening before board members voted to change the attorney. What you don't know is the experience and the professionalism that the Corzio Law Group brought to our district. There was attorneys at every level with every specialty, one of the biggest was the special education. It's not just the dollar amount that you have to look at how much the attorney is charging, it's how much money them representing the district saves us in litigation that we lose. And we have lost cases under other boards and other attorneys that costed the district money. So I was looking forward to hearing the discussion in finance and a real thorough understanding of what each law group brought and why this board would change. And unfortunately, again, it's not transparent. You didn't have any conversations in public about why you were changing. Mr. Gagliardi said he didn't even know that was on the agenda tonight or this was going to be voted on. It's shameful. It really is shameful what you're all doing. Ms. Bora, I, I commend you for speaking up, I commend you for abstaining on it. I, I hope that your committee, you're the chair of, will be taken seriously. This is a board of committees. You're broken up into committees to make recommendations and to the full board. To take that away from the committee after they put a directive forward, it, it shows what you're truly trying to do here, and it's, and it's, it's really sad. Mr. Gagliardi, I want to thank you for all that you've done for our district. It's been a pleasure working with you. I know your law group is well-respected, you speak at various education seminars, at school boards, I know you, your law group has written for school boards, they look to you for educational advice. It's unfortunate that we will no longer have that resource here, because I know that it has been, we used it tremendously. The fact that you had former commissioner of education at your law group was huge when we had issues that we needed to get advice on and move things forward in the Department of Education. It really is a detriment to, to, to this district that your law group will no longer be here, but thank you for your service. Anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close the public forum. We do not have a second closed session to go into, so we're going to skip down. Mr. Zeigner, did you have something that you wanted to say before we adjourn?
Yeah, I'll just take a, a moment. I just wanted to kind of give a reason to this board why I had changed my vote. I think you're entitled to that. And I want you to understand that I'm a big believer in teachers. I've always, always prided, tremendous pride for teachers and what they do in the classroom. I think, from my perspective, they're it, and I, I can't find better words to really explain my feelings about staff and how many years as a principal I worked with them. And I, I must tell you that, and again, I'll call the program CHAMP. I believe to the extent that they'll probably work very hard and put up something that would drive this program, that would drive the creative and the critical thinking skills, because that's what we really need to come up with. I've been involved in curriculum writing, and I know the importance of that. And so I wanted to give them the opportunity to come up with something that would drive these critical, creative, productive thinking skills that would move us forward, because I think it can be a great program. So that's, I just would like, I wish there's some way we could quantify, as you know how I feel about that, but you could look at that some other time. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Zeigner, okay, our next scheduled Board of Education meeting will be July 31st. Oh my gosh, summer will almost be over by then. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.